Okay, we're gonna start the meeting at seven o'clock. We'll open the meeting. Will you all stand please?
United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first item on the agenda is request by Dyson Woods to increase the cost of the affordable housing units. I'm gonna ask that you pick three members. Do not pick myself or Tim lines for this or any other cases tonight.
Okay, so that leaves a wide open, Bob Adams, Ted Carron, Jason Quinn.
And how's it down there?
What's the case number on this? Is there a case number?
Uh, zero three dash eighteen, is that what we have for the?
Zero three dash eighteen.
So we first, uh, before we get into everything, uh, the fifty-three G account needs some more money.
Okay.
We've got about twelve hundred, maybe twelve fifty in it. You know, like they have it go up to two thousand, so.
That's right.
Can we get a check of about seven fifty?
Yeah, I can do that.
You bring that in when?
It'll be probably next week, but I'll bring it in. Gary's, my Gary who's here every day in Austin, so.
Okay, so I wanna go through a little history on Dyson Woods first before I have you speak, okay? So on April twenty-fourth, we get an application or request, uh, from Dyson Woods. It's a letter dated, uh, April eighteenth. Uh, Mr. Kenneth Bucico, Chairman, Joint Board of Appeals, Town of Dyton, one 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 seven, City Avenue, Dyton, Mass. Is that, is that next door then, I guess, one 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 one, the old range road?
Yeah, that's the old, that's the new building that we're in.
Uh, regarding Dyson Woods. Dear Mr. Bucico, as you know, this firm represents Dyton Homes LLC developer in connection with the subject comprehensive permit. You guys should have all this information in your files. For which the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency is project administrator. References made to condition seven D of the comprehensive permit is previously amended by your board by decisions dated January seventh, two thousand and seven, June twentieth, two thousand and twelve. A copy of the most recent decision being attached heretofore as exhibit A. Pursuant to seven sixty C M R thirty-one point zero three parentheses three. This letter will serve as our request to change condition seven B as amended for the purpose of increasing the maximum sale price of the remaining affordable units as follows. D, the maximum sale price of the affordable units shall be set at no more than either two hundred and three thousand six hundred dollars or seventy percent of the current listed area M S A HUD Metropolitan Statistical Areas' median income, whichever is less. As reasons for the request to change, the applicant states as follows. The applicant's nonprofit consultant, Housing Solutions of Southeastern Mass Inc., formerly South Shore Housing Development Corp., has determined that the maximum sale price applicable to three-bedroom affordable units based on seventy percent of current area M S A is two hundred and three thousand six hundred dollars. Assuming an interest rate of four point two five, which exceeds the current average available rate of interest for new single-family mortgages. And two, according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, the cumulative rate of inflation from June two thousand and twelve, the date of the board's most recent decision to April twenty eighteen, was nine point one nine percent. Additionally, according to the construction analytics, long-term construction cost inflation is double the CPI such that the construction cost inflation applicable to this project is eighteen point three eight percent, see exhibit B attached. Finally, the applicant applicant requests that the board make a determination of the change request. Request that is not substantially persistent with the board's two prior determinations and allow the changes set forth above. Can we dock in this matter for your next scheduled hearing unless a decision may be rendered administratively by the board, very truly yours, Anthony Matera. And as you know, we, uh, board at the last meeting, this was not a substantial, uh, change. So let's go back to the beginning of this case, uh, which was approved back on June thirtieth, two thousand and four. Uh, it was stated in condition number four. Affordable units, see affordable units, a market-rate units shall be distributed evenly throughout the project and shall be proportionate to the model types of the market-rate units constructed. In each of these three phases, the unit type should be varied among the various four-type model types. Sets that not more than eleven units in each phase shall be one of one model type. The board shall give written approval for the actual location of the affordable units prior to the issuance of the building permit. And going down to the end of that paragraph, it says that the affordable units shall be constructed simultaneously with or prior to the construction of market-rate units. And on seven D, uh, the maximum sale price of the affordable units, including condominium fees, insurance, and taxes, shall be set at no more than which can be afforded. As set forth in the Mass Housing Guidelines, by household earning seventy percent of the median income adjusted for household size, however, in no event shall the initial, shall the initial sale price for the affordable units to be greater than a hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. So we set the figure back way back when.
A long time, yeah, that reset twice, yeah.
Yeah. So on March ninth, uh, we approve going from fifty-two units, uh, decision I under three. It says the additions of three, thirteen lots, three of which will be affordable units, thereby increase the total amount of lots from the fifty-two to sixty-five, and the total number of affordable units from fifteen to eighteen. So we had approved going from fifty-two units, which was the original one, to sixty-five, thirteen more units, and of those eighteen altogether, they're gonna be affordable.
Correct.
Number eight says that the applicant shall construct a total of twenty-four units in phase two, six of which will be affordable, and tw- total of twenty-three units in phase three, six of which shall be affordable. And the number of market-rate affordable units which may be built during a phase as set forth in condition four, so we mentioned that, uh, as you build a market, you're supposed to be building affordable units, uh, which may be built during a phase as set forth in condition four, the company has to permit, shall be modified accordingly. All other aspects of set condition four shall remain in full force in effect. Additionally, the applicant shall locate the remaining unbuilt affordable units on the lots approved by the board during the public hearing. If you remember at the last meeting, you said that we had changed the way the affordable units were supposed to be made, 'cause I was concerned that you waited till the end.
Well, the six, six.
Let me just finish, that I waited, that you waited till the end to build six of the affordable units in phase three. And you said we had changed the, the way we're supposed to do it, and I haven't seen that change.
No, what you, what you had said to me was that you thought I was only supposed to have four units, four affordables remaining in the last phase. And I said, no, it was increased to six when we did this. When we, when we increased the lots, we changed the number.
But you also disagree with my position that you were supposed to, as you build a market house.
No, I never disagreed with that, I, I know that, I mean, I know.
Anyway, anyway, you may not disagree, you may, I believe you disagree with me, but if you didn't disagree with me, that's.
Not on that, I know where I am.
The point is, we have six left at the end of this, when they should have been, some of those affordable units should have already been built and sold.
Well, it doesn't, first of all, it, it says built, it doesn't say built and sold. And as I explained to you.
Yeah, but you, you've sold some houses and you, you're building the affordable, you've bought and sold.
No, what I did. I built, but I. What I.
You have eight houses left, is that what?
I, I don't disagree with that.
Twenty-three in phase three, you've built fifteen already, none of them are affordable.
That's not true. I built, I started with what I did.
I'm talking about phase three.
What I, what I did, if you let me, I'll explain what I did. Fifty-two houses, that's what our septic system was approved for, okay? So what we did was, we built to number fifty-two. This is what we, just forget about what the permit says, I'm just giving you the, what we did.
Yeah, 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 okay, yes, yeah, okay.
We did that so that we could raise the money to do the septic system, which we did after the fifty-two units. We didn't build the fifty-third unit, we stopped. At that point, we started with thirteen units remaining and true, in all honesty, if, I think if you check, the first two houses I put in were affordable. So when I, that I built, not that I sold, I, that I built. The first two houses, the fourteenth and fifteenth houses that I built in the phase.
So why would you have six left then?
'Cause I didn't sell any of them. I built them, but I didn't sell them.
And you didn't sell them, and then you didn't sell them, why?
So you converted them?
I didn't, because I haven't had a lottery yet, 'cause I haven't been able to set the price.
Did you convert them? Did you convert them into, into regular market-rate homes?
No. What I did was, I did ten, then I started the final thirteen, and what I tried to do, in all honesty, was I tried to distribute the affordables throughout the thirteen, just like that says. But I was doing it on thirteen instead of ten, admittedly. But when you say sold, it does, I built them.
But, okay.
I haven't sold any of them.
Okay, so you, but you didn't sell them because you didn't have a lottery?
Because I didn't have a price.
Well, that's why we've got six at the end here, because you wanna increase the price, but because, actually, well, we, we had a set price. We did, you did have a price.
No, but that's not why, the, the why.
Wait, wait, you did have a set price.
Correct, correct.
And you chose to not sell them because you wanted to increase the price?
No.
Oh, you don't wanna increase the price?
No, that's not why I didn't sell them though, you don't let me talk.
Why didn't you sell them then?
I didn't sell them, as I told you even before the meeting started, 'cause I wanted, what I wanted to try to do was batch them all together and sell them in a lottery. If you wait too long and you start and you do them, as this permit would have explained, over a four-year period, three-year period, that's how long we've been in this phase, dating back that long. Then I would have to have done like six lotteries, because anyone that qualified in the initial lottery would not have been around.
So.
When I get to the last, what I was trying to do.
When is the last time you had a lottery?
Phase two.
Which was what time?
Probably, I don't know, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. And then the phase stopped, and we stopped for a while. There was stopping involved.
Yeah, but you stopped, when you say you stopped for a while, you still were building houses, 'cause you just said you built some affordables that haven't sold yet, so you, they were some, you did say that.
No, I built the affordables in phase three, you asked me when the last one sold, they were in phase two. The last affordables that were sold were in phase two.
When did you build the first one, faced, uh, the affordable?
The first, the first affordable for phase three.
There's two things you said, you said you have. Do you have two completed affordables that are ready to be sold once?
I have, I have five affordables that are up and framed and a sixth foundation.
Okay, so it's not that.
All for phase three?
All for phase three. So I wanna batch, I wanna sell them, I wanna do one lottery, hopefully have a room of twenty-five people here to buy them, that's. The first phase, we sorta had that, the second phase, it didn't work out that way, we ended up having to list them with brokers to sell them. So we had the lottery, we paid for the whole lottery, and then, you know, because of the timing and everything else, no one was any good out of that lottery. So we ended up, as well as having to pay South Shore Housing three percent, whatever it was, for the lottery, I also had to pay a broker. So, so, so that's what I was trying to avoid happening again, was having to double pay on the, on the, on the realtor side of things. Granted, I didn't come back to the board, I'll give you that, but this is what I was trying to accomplish, it, it has nothing. The reason why I waited had nothing to do with waiting for a higher price, that's the last couple of months. But that doesn't explain why I waited till the, why I built them, sort of as I went along. At least I made, I think I made a somewhat valid attempt on the back end of it to distribute those six houses throughout, just as the permit says.
But leave a sign grade of your affordable's gonna be, so that.
No, no, I don't mean that a sign, I mean as far as building them in rhythm with the other market-rate homes out of the final.
Yeah, but you sold the mar- you sold some market rates.
But it doesn't, I don't think it, 'cause when you read it, and I hadn't read it, 'cause I didn't know this was coming up, but when you read it, it didn't say sell, it said I had to build. It didn't say I had to build and sell. And I built, I at least have built them.
Well, I'm, I'm troubled, I guess, and I'm speaking for myself, I'm missing.
They're already up, you're saying, how many?
Five of them are up.
Five of the six remaining?
Yeah.
And that, and that's how many are unsold right now?
Up front. Yes, I haven't done anything with this.
So five are unsold with the six being in process?
Never been processed, because he hasn't had a lottery.
He hasn't had a lottery. So there are.
All the houses are in process.
Yeah.
There's no sales in process.
Right, just the building of the house.
The construction.
Right.
So he has eight houses left, right?
I have, I have, I have six houses, I have five houses total, I have not started the last two, and as I said to Jim when I was in his office, I sort of looked at him and said, I saved those to protect ya, is what I said.
I'm confused, I'm confused. How many houses total, whether they be affordable or not?
I own eight, I own eight lots, five houses have wood on them, all affordable.
So you.
Two, one houses has a footing, it's affordable.
Three more are gonna, the other two, that'll be six, the other two are gonna be market-rate homes?
Correct, the last two that I'm building, the two that I saved to sort of like give you, give the town, I, I looked at Jim in the, you know, Jim's building aspect when I was talking in the call. The first time I was, I looked, I said, I saved two just to keep everyone calm, so that you always had that bit of leverage, leverage, I didn't, I didn't, if I wanted to be a jerk about it, I, I wanted to run out of town, right? Which is what they're fearful of, I would have built all my market-rate homes, and I would have left the six, and I didn't do that. I saved two for, two, the, two market rates at the end, so that I didn't look like I was being overly aggressive with the town as far as the four, that's why I did it.
So. So two of these affordable units were supposed to be built in phase two?
No, all the, everything's correct, all the, all the, all the, the timing might be off, I mean, Ken's right on that, but, but as far as the, the lots and the houses, they're all in the right place, they're all in the right phase. I didn't make, I didn't like, only sell five in phase two and have seven in phase three, I, I don't have that.
'Cause I thought you had said earlier, when you was conversating tonight, that the first two you were built were owed to the second phase.
No, the first two that I built in the second portion of the third phase were affordable. I was making the point that when I restarted after putting in the septic system.
Just trying to quit.
No, and I'm trying to be clear too, when I, when I, when I restarted after putting in the septic system, in order to get ahead of the game on the affordables, the first two building permits I pulled were affordable. And they were built ahead of the, the other ones, and then the sales started coming, and the lottery kept getting kicked on their end, South Shore Housing, and not being able to get in touch with them, blah, blah, blah. And one thing led to another, and here we are with that.
So you said five of the affordable units that you have, five of the six, you've already started, some of the work, so. Condition number four says the affordable units shall be constructed, constructed simultaneously with or prior to the construction of the market-rate units. So you're telling me that you started these houses here, but sold other market houses that, complete market houses, so these must have, these, these.
I started to.
Frames must be, have been exposed to the weather.
No, this sided, they're weather tight, they're weather tight, they've heated them. All right, some of them I was working on last winter. So I started these, so when I started this section of the phase, which the first closings that I had were the end of two thousand seventeen. So I'm guessing that, that when I started this phase, it was probably somewhere in the, this second portion of the third phase.
Yeah. The phase, right.
It was probably somewhere in the beginning to the middle of two thousand seventeen. And at that point in time, I, you know, the affordables were built, and they've been there since, and then I built the five, I've closed on, I believe, five more market rates. No, I closed on three market rates, so I intermingled three market rates amongst those six affordables.
Let me continue with the, uh, how the prices have changed. So on June thirteen, two thousand and twelve, I'll take just part of the, the letter that we received from your attorney. Uh, your request, and the maximum sale price of the affordable units shall be set at no more than either a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars or seventy percent of the current list on the M S A HUD Metropolitan Statistical Areas' median income, which is less, or whichever is less. That was your request.
And what was that?
This is, uh, June thirteen, twenty twelve.
Right, yeah, yeah, not today, I didn't know that, we're.
June twenty, two thousand and twelve, we voted and made a decision, uh, the maximum sale price of the affordable units shall be set at no more than either a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars or seventy percent of the current listed area M S A HUD Metropolitan Statistical Areas' median income, whichever is less. Let me just, for the board's information, let me just give you other, uh, forty Bs that we have here, so, uh, this is Stonegate Landing, this is dated December fourth, twenty thirteen. The first affordable unit was closed on June twenty-second, two thousand and seven, at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and then the last affordable unit they sold was for a hundred and eighty thousand.
What year?
Hundred and eighty, this is, uh, December fourth, twenty thirteen, a hundred and eighty thousand, a hundred and fifty dollars.
I have a listing of theirs, the two-ten, you'll see now.
Okay, I'm just going by, look, I have a fund. Stone, Stony Ridge, and this is dated March third, twenty fifteen. Uh, they have variety of models, types of which some will be three bedrooms, which is what we're talking about here, will cost two, two hundred thousand and seven hundred dollars, and the four bedrooms, not relevant, but I'll say it anyway, two hundred seventeen thousand and two hundred dollars.
Where yours at?
This is, uh, twenty fifteen. And December third, twenty fourteen, for Pines, uh, they have their affordable units, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars, and that's for a three-bedroom.
In what year?
This is, uh, twenty fourteen, December first, twenty.
Is that what you said at that, 'cause I have sales of theirs at higher numbers.
Right, you might have that.
This is back in twenty, twenty fourteen, so this is.
Are those, but don't, are those set by you or by the market?
Set by us.
Well, set by.
No, it's set by the market unless it's stated otherwise. So did, did, so.
No, no, that's market-rate homes, not, not affordable.
No, those are affordable homes.
Yeah, affordables are set by us.
Not, not necessarily, I think we set it, Dyson Woods.
Right.
But not necessarily.
You came back and asked.
There's a, oh, oh, let's rephrase.
So I'm just, I'm just.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm talking to Bob, talking to Bob. I think that what, I think the issue is, is that mine is the only one that has a ceiling. Everybody else is allowed to float along with what the state recommends.
They came back before us, didn't they, no?
No, okay.
All the other, all the other forty Bs float, no, it's all I want, I wanna float just like that.
I have a question for you, Ken.
Okay, well, I believe he is correct, Marguerite, is that Dyson Woods is the only one that we really set?
I wanna say so, but honestly, I haven't actually compared it, so I have to see.
It's possible that Abacras, we've also set.
Yeah, that one definitely, yeah. Stonegate may have had it in there at one point in time, 'cause that was done before Dyson Woods.
Yeah.
But I wanna say that as we got further along, I don't think it's in Stony Ridge, I'm not positive about the Pines.
I don't believe either one has a set.
Ken, you read a letter earlier, when you first started this, from what was, his, his petitioner, and they were basing it on Mass Housing's amounts, and can you run that by me again?
Which one are you talking from?
It was the very first thing you read tonight, it was a letter from them.
They get the, the two oh three six and the seventy percent of the, the affordable value.
Yeah, the applicant.
And who, I wanted to know where did this come from? What, what were they basing this on, I mean, they referred to Mass Housing.
It comes out of your permit.
Yeah. The applicant nonprofit consultant, Housing Solutions for Southeastern Massachusetts, formerly South Shore Housing Development Corp., has determined that the maximum sale price applicable to the three-bedroom affordable units based on seventy percent of the current area M S A, so this is for the Bristol County area, right? Is two hundred and three thousand six hundred dollars.
What are you asking for?
He's asking for two hundred and three thousand.
Well, I mean, I think technically, what I'm really asking, I'm not, Marguerite can correct me, hope for, I'm really just asking for the, my ceiling to be gone, and to be, to float. If the, 'cause I noticed in what Tony wrote, he said two oh three six at four point two five percent. Well, if the rates go up to, to four point five percent, then I'm not gonna be able to get two oh three six. And I'm not, you know what I'm saying, so I'm just, I, basically, I want my ceiling removed, and let me just get what the market, what the, not the market, but what the state allows, would allow Dyson Woods and any other forty B in the town of Dyton to get, that's all I want.
Okay, so before I enter any questions from the board, you wanna add anything else to the whole, you know, I presented this, is something you want to?
No, I appreciate, I appreciate your presentation. Um, I had increased costs, I mean, I think we've demonstrated, there's been minimal, if any, profit. Um, the price is six years old, you, you addressed that, Tony addressed the costs, and, you know, even, and just to point out, resales in here, there was a resale in two thousand seventeen, I believe, that went for like one ninety-five or something, one ninety-four. So even the resales within the development, and just from my perspective, I understand the whole affordable component and the benefits and everything else, but I don't know too many people that, that move in and pay one seventy-five and can turn around and list it for two oh three the next day. That doesn't really sound too right to me, so given what we've been through, I don't know.
Okay, so I'll start with you, Bobby, you have any questions?
Well, judging from the lift that you have there, that everything is relevant, costs have gone up, it's been six years since we ran this before. I don't have a problem with it going up to what is recommended, uh, for Mass, what is it, South Shore, uh, but that, as far as removing the ceiling, uh, I'm a little hesitant on that. Only because it's been there right from the start, and if you need to come back, come back to us.
Fair enough, I'm not, if we, if I have that two oh three, I'm gonna list it for that anyway, so.
'Cause it's all relevant, I mean, in the, in the, five of the six houses are already built, or are not completely built, but they're framed, you said.
Well, no, there's some of them have trim in them, some of them have kitchens in them, some of them have just framed, so.
'Cause everything is relevant.
Zach, do you have any questions?
No, I've had no, no.
Jason?
Um, I guess for my curiosity, the lottery, going back to that, um, what are the costs to you, I'm just asking a general question to, to you for the lottery, and what, and not having it, not having it, you know, two years ago, or a year ago, or whatever it was when the houses were, or before the house was finished built?
I don't, I, I, I don't know that. No, there, there should be no additional cost, I, I, I don't really understand, the cost of a lottery, it's.
You brought up cost, you brought up cost earlier, you didn't wanna go through multiple lotteries, 'cause you didn't wanna do the cost.
Well, no, 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 what I didn't wanna, what happens is, we have the lottery, and then we're required to have one lottery, so we have one lottery. If we don't get a pool, if we don't get the people in that lottery, if they advertise it, all right, we, we hope we're gonna advertise it, we're gonna get a lot of people. Time is a problem, it's very difficult to qualify, so in order to get, say, six, I may need sixteen.
Yeah.
All right, so now I get my sixteen, they go, go through the bank, they get discarded, some make too much money, some don't make enough money, following the rules, whatever the case may be. If it takes me too long to deliver the house, now you qualify, right, Jason, you qualify, but now, I haven't started any houses yet, or I'm just starting your house, and it takes me nine months or a year. But in the meantime, you got a two-dollar raise, you don't qualify anymore, you're gone. Now, there's no one left, I gotta give it to a broker, so I gave it to Eric May, who sells all my houses, so as well as having already, you know, incurred the debt with South Shore Housing to do the lottery and having to pay them, it's not their fault, it didn't work out, they don't take responsibility for it. I also had it listed for it with a broker, so I had to pay twice, I had to pay the broker three percent, and I had to pay them three percent. So I ended up paying six percent commissions on the affordable houses, which seemed sort of, I don't know, didn't really seem right to me, I don't know. It was like loser on a loser, an additional loser on a loser, and I wanted to try to avoid it, and the best way to avoid it was to get all the houses up sort of at once, and then I can do a lottery, and hopefully within six months, beyond, instead of eighteen.
Two thousand and twelve, yeah, okay.
So.
And then if we keep the ceiling, I'm, I guess, Ken, if, if we keep the ceiling, is he allowed to come back and?
I'm not coming back.
Right, I, I know, you only have five houses left, but.
I'm not coming back, I, I don't have a problem with the ceiling.
Okay, so he's allowed to come back as many times as he wants.
Yeah, but I'm, no, that was, yeah, but, but the houses are out, I won't, those houses will not be there in two thousand twenty-four in my name, or my company's name, trust me.
So in two thousand twenty, it's over. Uh, Tim, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay, does someone, do you have anything else you wanna add?
Um, I just wanna remind you that we also talked about, maybe talking about, or talking about the road after, if that's, is this time on the agenda for that, for that?
Well, it's, it's, it is not on the agenda, so, and it's a couple of things that, we're gonna probably have you come back next month, but.
Fair enough.
I'll get into that.
That can wait till next month.
Was that?
That can wait till next month.
But we have a couple of things that, we're not on the agenda, but we need to address with you and.
Fair enough.
Go toward the next, so. So does someone wanna make the motion?
All right, I'll make the motion that we approved this at two hundred and three thousand, and so we'll keep the ceiling and arrange the same.
I'll second.
Is it two hundred and three thousand six hundred?
Two hundred and three thousand six hundred, is that what the, the request was?
That's what, that's what the request was.
That's, that's that.
Okay.
I'd add something about in compliance with state numbers.
Yeah, completely, I would add that as well, too, in compliance with man, whoever sets that, that value, I forget the.
With South Shore.
Sat, was it South Shore or whatever?
Well, Matt's, Matt's Housing, I believe.
Matt's Housing probably sets that, yeah.
Any discussion? I do want that thing that you just added, that Jason, I am a little concerned about that one, because he's waited so long to have these six houses, is he gonna not wait for, to figure to go up before he, before he actually sells these houses so they can get two more, five thousand, that's like, that's the only reason why I, I'd be happy if it was stayed at two hundred and three thousand six, six hundred, which is what he requested.
Okay, all right, then, uh, I, I have a, no, no, you should do that, yeah, we can take that out.
So you, you're gonna take that off? So we have, do you have the motion then that it's gonna be?
I'm afraid the number will go down. If you set me at two oh three six, I have to sell it at two oh three six, if the number goes down because interest rates go up, it should be able to float down. Don't, don't set a price, set a maximum price.
Okay, the maximum, the maximum.
Maximum price.
Set a maximum price instead of a price, that way.
So there's, there's a, a motion that the maximum price for the affordable units will be two hundred and three thousand six hundred dollars.
Maybe we'll make it maximum.
And Jason's second, uh, Tim made that, yeah, Tim.
Bob made it.
Bob made the motion. Uh, no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No opposed.
You have more for me?
Yes. Uh, we're gonna discuss the releasing of funds in your performer.
Okay, but I wasn't looking. Okay, but I wasn't looking, just, you know, I wasn't looking for a release of funds, I'm looking for the methodology for the release of the.
Okay, so maybe, uh, we can have Marguerite, uh, talk about that. I did request the, uh, the pro forma, you've all been giving copies of it. Tim, you rem, you may remember Ed Marchand that we met at that forty B, uh, training that we went to?
Yes.
He no longer reviews, uh, pro formas, so we weren't able to get him. They did suggest somebody else, but we would not have been able to have an answer for, for today, uh, regarding the pro forma, so if anybody here wants us to get a consultant to, uh, evaluate the pro forma, we can, uh, we can do that and have that, hopefully, uh, for the next, uh, reading, or we can just either own, uh, discuss it with, with assistance of Marguerite, uh, tonight, the pro forma.
And this is his pro forma?
This is his, uh, pro forma.
Am I listening to the right one here?
But he, there is an older one there also, so.
The, the only, if I may, that's mine.
So, uh, so you have the older one, you, the new one, just so you know, that at the end, he's gonna have to, uh, provide us with how much the expenses are, how much, uh, income he made, show that he's made less than twenty percent profit, which I think he's probably gonna show less than twenty percent, uh, profit, and that'll all have to be verified. So this was, uh, I had requested this because he was asking for the affordable units to be increased. So he's given us the, uh, statements on his taxes for the last.
Twenty-seven years.
Was it twenty-seven?
Two thousand four, six, whatever, one time, some of you were still at high school.
Not twenty-seven.
I was in middle school.
Twenty-seven years?
No, no, it's not, it's fourteen.
And just, and just keep in mind that the person who, the accountant who provided us with that information about his, uh, income tax, said we did not audit or review the summary of profits and losses by year nor were we required to perform any procedures to verify the accuracy or completeness of the information provided by management, so this is self-reporting, I guess.
Not, not really, it's, it, it, just, if, if you want, that's a, and I think, that's a, a, a legal statement, I don't hire him to do reviews, I don't hire him to do audits, I hire him to do my taxes.
He's just saying that.
That's why I hired him to do my taxes, that's what he did, and that's what he's reporting on, you know?
So what is it, uh, yeah, wish, do you want us to hire the consultant to, um, review the pro forma?
Now, may I? Cause I don't know why you're reviewing, I mean, I have no problem discussing the pro forma, reviewing it with you, but the purpose of providing the pro forma.
Okay, why don't we just, uh, we'll have the discussion, first, and you're gonna, before we take a vote on it, we'll, we'll get in, in, yourself.
Fair enough, fair enough.
What is the interest of, uh, a lot of motion being made, yeah, what is the interest of the?
Well, someone with more expertise than I have should review it. We don't have Ed Marchand, you said that.
Yeah.
And I don't know who else we have, or.
Well, we were given another name, I believe.
Yes, and we were given it on Monday, so we didn't have enough time to reach out, move it to time.
We knew we wouldn't have it here, so I wanted to bring it back for the members.
It should be reviewed, uh, by a professional.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate to, um, make a motion that, um, to have an expert come in and look at the pro, pro, pro forma? So the zoning board of appeals committee may have, um, a better understanding.
Sure, we're gonna hold this, hold off a minute, Jay can give, uh, his concerns about it, and then we can all entertain that motion.
Uh, I'm, yeah, I'm just sort of asking, the, the purpose of providing that information, which I would provide at your request at any time, anyway. But the, the reason why we did provide it was to make the decision that was made tonight, which was to demonstrate to the board that one way or another, that we weren't, that we didn't make so much money here, that it would be egregious for you to, you know, approve a further increase in, 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 in sales to us. Aside from that, we're coming down near the end of the project, I'm not sure if it's standard procedure to review the pro formas of these projects when they're ninety percent complete, if that is your policy, that's fine. But otherwise, I don't know really why you'd be asking me to spend the money for the consultant to review it at this stage of the project. Unless you have doubts about.
Didn't Bishop finish his project, isn't there one project been completed?
I'm not finished.
No, Bishop is very close to being completed and.
That, I was gonna answer your question, we haven't done this, we haven't got to this yet, that's the answer to that.
Yeah, but, uh, Bishop has not given us his pro forma, yet. And that, that's his point, that's, that's his point, is that we can request the pro forma, which I did request, the question is whether, because he, uh, so Tim, he would be paying for the, you know, he would be paying for the consultant's part of, it's not the burden of the town, it's, but he hasn't burdened the town to pay for that. And his argument is just that we should wait until the end of the project to have somebody come in and take a look at it, make sure that his figures are accurate.
And just, if I might add, when, when, when you, when that opportunity does arise, you're gonna have a heck of a lot more paperwork than what I provided. I mean, at that point, we, there were standards that are set by the state as far as, 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 um, the reporting and the way and who, cause I ran into it on another forty B, that only certain accountants, only certain people are qualified to make these sorts of reports, so the information you're gonna be provided will be, you know, in a, in a better form and more accurate, more complete, cause I'm not done, I still have eight, you know, eight out of sixty-three, you know, fifteen percent of units.
So if we did one now, you'd have to do another one, at the, at the completion, on his, on his dime, to get that as well?
Yeah.
Why don't we just wait till it's time?
Okay.
I have no issues with that.
Can I also add that the comment by the, um, alternative consultant that you got with regards to the fact that under forty B, we're, really, towns aren't able to ask for pro forma reviews in the same way that they used to, there was shifts in the law since you permitted this, which say that it really only comes up when the developer puts that issue, the economics of the project. So in this case, at this particular modification request, that had been what the developer had done, however, you guys just took a vote, so. Um, I would suggest that unless you wanted to somehow tie that to your vote, you really don't have legal authority to require this, he could certainly agree.
Yeah, I'm not questioning your legal authority, I'm just pointing out, no benefit, there's no benefit.
I know you're not, no, I, I know you're not, and I, and, but I think as sitting here with, um, in the role that I play, I think I need to at least let the board know, and I know that you're not suggesting that you wouldn't agree either, but I just wanna make sure that everyone knows that if you're doing this, it's either by agreement, or it was somehow tied to the vote that you took.
I agree, so, uh, there'll be no motion.
I'll strike that motion.
You want to agree?
Well, what is it, is it, uh, July?
We're not gonna do that.
Nobody, it's, uh, two other things, is it, is it July eighteenth on next meeting, yes, when's the next meeting?
Yes, July eighteen. That's everybody.
Okay, so we have, uh, two things that we're gonna discuss, and the reason, uh, Marguerite, the reason why I'm not gonna discuss it tonight is because they're not on the agenda, but we received a letter from you back on April eighteenth, uh, on review of conditions to be completed for this, and, I don't, did he get a copy, did we send it?
I have it.
Okay, but it's not on the agenda, so I really don't think it's appropriate for us to discuss it tonight.
Okay.
So we're gonna discuss that at the next meeting.
We, we, I don't know what's appropriate and what's not.
Well, we're supposed to have whatever we're gonna discuss on the agenda.
No, no, we're gonna ask different questions.
Okay, sure.
It would make more sense on something like that for me to talk to you or a couple of board members throughout the month before we get this, so there's a full understanding maybe of everything, of where we stand, then it can be decided whether or not there's a necessity to drag me down, I don't, I don't mind coming, you know? But if, 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 cause I looked at most of it, and I didn't go through it in any detail recently, so I don't wanna discuss it either. But most of it seemed to be under control, in my opinion.
Well, you can give us a report prior to the next meeting, that is the, what you think is already under control.
Right, so I know in the past, we had meetings in the town hall before, I don't know if that's, if you.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that, and the other thing is, uh, we could amend the regulatory agreement, and that's not on the agenda for tonight either. Uh, so I would like to discuss that also at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Has there been, Mr. Chairman, has there been, has an amendment submitted, proposed amendment submitted, or the?
Well, I'm going by what, uh.
I'm guessing Tony's gonna have to get us something.
I think there was a question about what was recorded, if I recall correctly.
But there was one back. Well, there was one back in two thousand and ten, right?
Oh, you were talking.
And then there was an amendment that might be needed, yes. I think there was one that was, I had indicated I had seen, I think there was a question about what has been recorded.
Right, and we, and it hasn't been.
And we don't have a copy of anything that may have been recorded back.
Tony, I think Tony, you know, Tony's usually pretty good about it, I don't, so I'm assuming it is, I will assume it is, and I'll have him verify, he had the letter though.
So I think I may note that in my email, and that maybe you could share that with Tony, and he might be able to address that issue so that it can be further addressed by the town at the next meeting.
Fair enough.
Anybody have any questions of, uh, Jay while he's here, while we, so we're gonna, I'll see you next month, when you're doing.
See you the evening, thank you.
Right, so, yeah, thanks.
Oh, excuse me. Hey, you don't wanna leave that here? I want that.
Yeah, who are, hopefully, so, see you later, thank you.
You keep it posted.
Take care.
Yeah.
Where is the, uh, for the second case, Horton Street, where is that, on the notice?
Are we gonna address?
Okay, yeah, I see, I see the handwriting on it.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, are we gonna address the planning board hearing, still underway?
Well, I guess so, yes, it's still on the new business, old business. So, uh, as you know, we, uh, was it last month or month before that, we, uh, gave permission for, uh, the pines to apply for civil way to be a public road, and now it's coming before the planning board. Uh, they have not scheduled it yet, but they want a member of the ZBA to attend that meeting, it's my intention to attend that meeting, uh, and anybody else can attend, it's, it's a public meeting, but I plan on, uh, going there and advocating for civil way to be a public way, so.
What's the date on that?
We don't know, we don't have a date yet, yeah, we don't have a date yet, so just that it may come up between now and our next, uh, uh, meeting, so just to let the board know that, uh.
I don't know, yeah, no, it's right.
Are we talking July, August, is that even known, now, okay, okay.
And I, I, I've assumed that, uh, the pines is trying to get it done as quickly as possible.
Yeah.
Because they, I'm sure they want it to be at the special town meeting in October.
Yep, yep.
For the public to decide whether or not, uh, it should become a public way. So I still don't see the notice then, for the, so this, Horton Street?
Yeah, the newspaper name's right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
It should be in the, um, the back.
I see, okay, I see, I see it over here on this, uh, paper, so. So we have, uh, four dash eighteen seventeen ninety-two Horton Street, variances split one lot with, with two dwellings into two lots, with one, uh, dwelling each. Would you pick the voting members, uh?
It's gonna be the same, five Adams, Zach Karen, Jason Quinn, cause you guys are in limbo, right?
Right, so let me read the notice that was in that, uh, the paper. Uh, seven, seventeen ninety-two Horton Street Legal Notice, Dyson Board of Appeals Hearing, Dyson Town Hall, nine seventy-nine Somerset Avenue, June twenty, twenty eighteen at seven P M. Notice is hereby given that the Dyson zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June twenty, twenty eighteen at seven P M. At the Dyson Town Hall, lower level, nine seventy-nine Somerset Avenue, Dyson, uh, zero two seven one five, on the application of Brad Pitt's general. For property located at seventeen ninety-two Horton Street, Shore and Assessors Map seven, slot number forty-one, for a variance pursuant to section Articles Appendix B, Table of Dimensional Regulations in Section Six, definitions of the town Dyson zoning bylaws, and in order to permit the variance to split one lot with two dwellings into two lots, or for each dwelling have an insufficient frontage, dry land, and sideline setbacks. Okay, I'll let you, uh, present the case, but just so the board knows, th- this is already, this is, this is one lot that already has two houses on it.
Gotcha. That seems weird, I'm not used to that, I took release of the.
How is this, it's not the first?
Old Wood Street.
Old Wood Street.
Old Wood, that loops around and comes back, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Steve Gilbert, S F G Engineering, with the applicant.
I just wanted to make sure, cause I have a son that's an Austrian, I didn't wanna be in.
Yeah, this is on Old Wood.
He's far enough away.
Do you need a copy of payment for the advertisement, or you already got that?
I got that.
Okay, good, okay. Yeah, as you, as the chairman stated, there are already two houses on this lot, it's kind of a unique property, uh, I know that doesn't happen too often. The Mass General laws would allow the planning board to rule on this and allow this by right if the house was built before subdivision control law, subdivision control law became in effect, uh,
Sixty-eight.
In, no, no, in, uh, in Dyson, in Dyson zoning bylaws came in fact, excuse me, zoning bylaws came in effect fifty-five. This, how, these properties were built, I think, but to the best of my research, in the early seventies. So this does not predate the zoning bylaw, therefore, the planning board can't rule on this, which they generally could do this by right, so that's why we're in front of you. What we're proposing, I mean, there's two houses on this property right now, there's a drive that wraps around that services them both, uh, they share it well, they have their own septic system. What we're proposing to do is put a property line in between these two properties, give them both their own wells, both their separate septic systems, and both their own drives, so they're not, uh, interfering with each other.
You're doing a town water then?
There's no town water there, there's on Horton Street, but not Old Horton Street.
This is Texas, so this is Old Horton Street, not Horton Street.
Correct, correct, yeah, that's, I'm sorry, but that's Old Wood Street. Um, we've already been in front of, uh, we've done, we've perked lots, we've been in front of the waterhouse, they've approved these plans, we've been, and there's a wetland line behind this property, that's another, that's one of the variances we're looking for, uh, the conservation commission has already, uh, given orders and conditions approving both lots, so we've been in front of both boards and got that approval. Uh, what we're here in front of you folks for is a variance for the lack of frontage for the two lots, for the.
The both, both insufficient frontage?
Correct, correct, um, uh, they require, without water, they require two hundred and fifty feet of frontage, okay, so we're requesting, uh, frontage of one hundred and sixty-seven point eight three on lot B, and one hundred and thirty-two point one seven feet on lot A. Uh, they, they're, uh, requirement of thirty thousand square foot dry land, we cannot meet, so we're also seeking a variance on that, we're seeking a slight variance of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and fourteen square feet of dry land on lot B, and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fourteen.
Uh, we, let me back you up here a minute, do we need to, uh, these houses are already existent, so they're encroaching on the wetlands, though, are they, uh,
Yeah, correct.
Uh, I'm not sure you need to have two variances on this, is my, my, uh, feeling, because they're already there.
Mm-hmm.
And the only, like, they're, the amount of square footage is, uh, well, am I wrong in this?
Well, well, he needs to go in because he, because he's dividing the property, when else?
Well, you need variances on the two lots for insufficient frontage, because he.
Especially to the. Hmm, correct, correct.
But it's also for the size of, of the lot, so.
Right, but it doesn't say that in his application, he's only asking for one variance, he isn't asking for two.
No, no, variance for each, for each, uh.
For one and two lots, having insufficient frontage.
Insufficient dry land.
Dry land and sideline setbacks.
Correct.
So you're actu- actually asking for three, three.
Correct, that's the third, the third one, we're, we're, we're creating, because we, we're putting this property line between the two houses, you know, exactly between them, so we've got five point five feet setback to the side, you know, to the property line. And we, we have to, you know, that we, we're creating that property line, so there's no, no way getting around that.
I don't know, it's, when, it's, you asked for the three variances on one single lot.
That's correct.
I don't think he has much choice on that.
No, I know, it's, I mean, that's.
It would've been nice if we could charge them each variant.
But it's just.
So are both the houses, uh, all, separate owners?
No, no.
The same owner?
Correct.
On both houses?
House, yeah, solo realty, LLC owns the properties and never.
We're, we're creating this.
They're, they're repairing the properties and bringing them up to, you know, uh.
The way, excuse me, the way it is, you have, uh, uh, two hundred and, you have over three hundred.
Three hundred feet, yeah.
Three hundred feet.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Frontage, the way it is now, we're creating all the rest of this, we, uh, by put, divide and align, and it, they encroach it on the side yards, and yet, and then on top of that, it's insufficient amount of acreage.
A dry land, it's plenty of acreage, it's the dry land.
The dry land, close, too close to the wetlands.
Correct.
And we're here to correct the problem, because that would not be allowed today, to have two houses on that.
Correct.
So how, how big are the lots with, with the wetlands, cause you can't build them, but it's still a lot, you're gonna pay taxes on it.
Well, it says it's a lot.
Lot, lot B is a hundred and nine thousand plus square feet, so that's almost two and a half acres.
Nine thousand.
Right, cause that's what you're gonna pay taxes on, because.
Yeah, and lot A is a hundred and thirteen thousand square feet.
Okay, right, so that clears that up for me.
Yeah. I've spoken with the building inspector, and he is in agreement that case law supports this type of variance, again, if this, if they were built ten or twelve years earlier, the planning board.
I'm just trying to clear up there.
No, I understand.
And those houses are gonna remain, they're just gonna be refurbished, or rehabbed?
Correct, correct, correct.
Do you have any other questions, Bob?
So, a lot A is a five bedroom, and this is a two bedroom home.
And you have had it perked, and it's, you've got that all taken care of, that isn't, that isn't really under our authority anyway.
Yes. And the board house already. No, but the board house already approved the plan, and so has conservation commission.
Ken, just, uh, just a question, by creating these two insufficient lots, are we gonna feature owners of this house if they were to come before us for something, could that be a potential issue?
If they come before us?
Like if, uh, are we, could we, could this be causing any problems for future owners?
I, I don't, I think it's actually helpful.
Okay.
Future owners, but. No, I mean, we're gonna be given varie, assuming that we vote favor, we're gonna be given variances, that makes it a legal, a legal lot, I mean, it's.
If, if I may, between the two homes, there are seven bedrooms, and we're gonna reduce that to five, three on one and two on the other.[1777.45] And you've already got the plan approved for that, so, but I mean, like I said, that has nothing to do with it.
And the septic would also have to be aligned with the, the number of bedrooms.
You said the Conservation Commission-
I'm a little concerned that, uh, you've got a configuration docked in there in gray, right? Now, uh, and then your, your lot lines here are going all the way out to, uh, well, it says, Residence Oakland State Farm Agriculture, on what I have. What is the reason for the gray area?
This, he's showing the drive right here.
Right.
You can't see where it's raised.
Those are just gonna be driveways?
Yeah, correct, at one time it went through here, I don't know if you can see it in the other way, it went through.
Yeah, yeah. It was a little confusing, because it looks like that's all you have for, for frontage, and yet, it, the, it's showing the whole lot.
Oh.
It's just, I'm trying to make everything clear in my mind here.
Okay.
All right.
So basically, cutting the drive off here, this is paved, this pavement's coming out, so the septic system will go in right here.
Okay.
To serve that, that house lot B.
Which gray is existing, am I correct, uh?
Yeah. Yeah, but we're cutting off this, this one, this is currently-
Right, there's, there's also existing driveway, that's not colored, but that's gonna go away.
So your total-
Correct.
Your total frontage goes from the orange line to the purple line.
Yep, this one's one thirty-two thirty-seven, and this one's one sixty-seven eighty-three.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, fine.
Any other questions, sir? I'll put Jason in.
No, I, I, the comit-, the Conservation Commission approved the, the wetlands and, and encroaching on that.
Correct, and they've already given us some, all the enough conditions, yeah.
Okay.
Kenny, you have any questions?
No, I just, just asked a question, I was going to.
Any other questions?
I'll prove-
Anything else you wanna add?
Mm-hmm.
Does someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we, um, approve the variance for splitting the one lot.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
We just gotta make sure we include all three of those variances in the motion, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Approving all the three variances.
Correct, yeah.
Yep.
No discussion, all is in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Uh, Bob, could you give the reasons why, uh, you voted in favor?
Well, it's gonna clean up a mess, for one thing, 'cause you got two houses on one lot and existing. They're gonna downsize it from seven bedrooms down to two with the proper septic systems in place, and that'll be upgraded, and, uh, well, that's about it.
And for me, just like I, I asked you, Ken, if it's gonna help any potential owners from, from, you know, in the future, I'm absolutely for this, yeah.
And, um, for the same reasons, and then I think the, uh, you mentioned the case law that, that was, was mentioned to you as well, so.
Mm-hmm.
And it's pre-existing, two lot, two lots.
Yep.
Do we have to go off?
No.
Well, it's one lot for two houses.
Did we already have, uh? So we have an extension till, uh, September twenty, twenty eighteen, is that gonna be sufficient time for you to, uh, okay, so we don't need that for instance.
Great.
So we're gonna have a decision written up.
Correct.
Uh, once it's written up, uh, we'll sign off on it. And, uh, we'll give it to the clerk's office. You'll, you'll be notified when we give it to the clerk's office, because twenty days after we, you'll register it, uh, for anybody to appeal, and then after that, you can, uh, start processing.
Correct. Thank you very much.
Street for building.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Mister Chairman, could you please state out the, uh, conditions with three variances, just for the record?
Yep, yep.
Sure. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let me get back to the case.
Um, yeah, we're here, Ken.
Yeah, okay. One of the variances is to split one lot with two dwellings into two lots. Uh, second variance is insufficient, uh, frontage. And the third is, uh, dry land, it has insufficient amount of dry land. And also these, it's almost like four, the sideline setbacks do not, uh, we give a variance on that also.
Thank you. And did they identify, I, I haven't seen the application, did they identify the actual resulting frontage, uh, dry land inside?
Yeah, only sixty-seven feet.
They did on the map that was presented towards the-
So I would say, in accordance with the, um-
We can have that back, Jason.
Is it a plan, did they submit a plan?
Yeah, they did.
In accordance with the, uh, the plan. Submitted as part of the application.
I don't, I, Kenny, I have a question, I don't understand it.
I can take it now, and I'll say you-
Twenty-eight thousand six hundred and fourteen, twenty-nine thousand fourteen of dry land, why isn't that enough?
It must be thirty thousand, right?
Thirty thousand or?
Is it thirty thousand?
I thought it was thirty thousand.
I'm, I don't know.
You, you're probably more, I, I, this is me.
It's not three quarters of an acre, which is a little bit more than thirty thousand.
Three, three quarters of an acre is, uh, the size of the lot, minimum size with town water. Three quarters of an acre.
Does that have to be all dry land?
It's a, it doesn't, it never has before, that's-
Yeah, there must be some bylaw that says it's gonna be thirty thousand, or something.
I, I just had, that, that hasn't come up before me.
So the, uh, next agenda item is the review, and the-
Can we, before we go any further, remember, in the future.
Yep. Nicole?
Sorry.
Nicole, in the future, when someone comes up with this, like this, uh, you had it, where, where's the variance for that? I mean, the application. We used to have this in, in the past. It says variance to split one lot into two lots. Can you list the ones that he's seeking relief from, like it'll be twenty-three hundred fifty, twenty-nine hundred, so that we can refer to these before we get in there?
Okay.
'Cause this issue here with it is a question for me, 'cause we used to always do that before, he's asking for relief for twenty-nine, twenty-three fifty, twenty-six seventy.
My, my understanding was that whatever they fill out on the application is not for me to say, it's for them to defend.
Well, it's gonna be, he's gotta, had to have gone to the building inspector, and the building inspector referred him to us.
If, if it's clearly written on his application, it's in the notice, and it's, it's stated there.
Well, then, do that for him, have them look it up and do it, if you don't wanna look it up, but it would help us.
I will, I'll list, yeah.
That way then, when we get, we used to get these in the mail before, too, and we'd have time to look at them before we came in, go and refer, uh, before we got here, I mean, that-
You sent this out to everybody, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, by e-, they use email now, they don't-
But I can-
Yeah, I understand the email.
But I can, no, I can, I, I'll list it out.
I didn't see this on the emails, if you wanna get technical, I did see the agenda.
Yeah, you're just looking for the rep, for the, for the bylaw numbers.
Okay.
I mean, I look at the emails.
Did we send this as an attachment?
I, I believe I did, yeah, but I, I-
I didn't open the attachment.
That probably would've been in the attachment, but-
But it's not written on here in the beginning, so it wouldn't have been there anyway.
Okay, I will list it out based on what they-
Right, have them do it then, I don't care who does it, I need to know it ahead of time so that we can, so I'm not sitting here looking through the book, 'cause some of-
Yeah, that's not-
This issue hadn't come up before me before. It, uh, I know it's three quarters of an acre for a, a buildable lot without town, with town water, and it's a full acre, and two hundred and fifty foot frontage for, uh, a, a farm A lot without town, with a well. Now, he's asked, they asked for relief with all that, but I never knew that there was an issue of how much square footage is having to have with land, 'cause this is a ten acre lot, even though it's wetland.
So I've seen this before, uh, she tagged it up, so this is possible, this is my, my fault. Normally, as you know, we, we would put the sections.
Right, sections.
Variance, uh, frontage, section, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's not here, that's my fault, not Nicole's, but in the future, uh-
So he does list appendix B in section six definitions?
Yeah.
He just doesn't specify which parts of appendix B and which definition. So the definition would be lot area, so I think that's what, I think that's what you can easily do with him, with any applicant that comes in, is to say, if, once you put that down, you need, say, you need to be more specific. Can't just reference appendix B.
Well, yeah.
You can't just reference the section six definitions, you have to tell us which definition, you have to tell us what part of appendix B, you know, are you looking at? So that the board can know, for instance, if there's town water or sewer. But I don't disagree with Nicole's overall point, that shouldn't be telling them which ones to put in, for it more of, once she sees it, she can say, this needs to be more specific.
A lot of the times, it's gonna be referred to, they've already gone to the, the building inspector, and he's denied them, and they send them to us, so they already, they already know what they're talking about.
Well, we're gonna go over tonight's meeting, a possible change in our application form, so maybe we can address it when we, when we go to the application form, so we can be more specific on that. So, uh, the next agenda item is strawberry fields, now, we have something for Margarita, we're gonna give her-
I did include, uh, a sheet in there.
And that's, is that thirty-two?
Yes.
Yeah, that's-
Strawberry field.
And, uh, for the board members, um, there's the pink binder, and I know Jason, and Lo, and Tim, and Ken. I don't have, it's Zach has reviewed the strawberry fields binder, but that is in the office, it's an early draft, so.
Okay.
Take about an hour?
Yeah. Thank you.
So, on, uh, strawberry fields, it's a forty B that's gonna come before the board in, in the future. Uh, they have not sent in an application yet. Uh, they're waiting for a site eligibility, uh, letter to come in, and once that happens, I believe they're gonna be sending an application of the forty B. As I mentioned, I believe at the last, uh, meeting, if somebody comes in before the planning board, for example, and asks for a conservation subdivision, and gets denied, or withdraws without prejudice. They can't turn around the next day and come back with a forty B. These zoning Board of Appeals can say, time out, we're gonna, you can come back to us within a year, or after a year. So that is not before us, but in the very near future, Bob, this is something that's gonna, the board is gonna have to make a decision on this, uh, to-
Kenny, if it comes before us and we deny somebody now before us, it's two years before they can come back.
No, it's a year.
Is it a year?
Okay, it's a year on forty Bs.
On forty Bs, okay.
So it's, I believe, and we can have Margarita clarify that, but I believe it's a year from when they've been denied, or they withdraw without, uh, prejudice. So, we've got a little time period on this, but what's happened, uh, in the process now, uh, Bishop, who's doing the forty B, uh, has had Mass Housing go to the site where strawberry fields is gonna be, evolved, we're notified of that. I couldn't attend, I had a funeral in the morning, I had my granddaughter's, uh, school thing in the afternoon, so I couldn't attend. Uh, Tim Ryan's attended as well as Nicole.
But we couldn't attend it, and what-
Well, I'm not sure if it was called as a public hearing or not, we can, I don't have that before us, whether, uh, Mallory made it a public hearing, which meant more members could go. Uh, so we had, uh, Tim Ryan's, we had, uh, Nicole go to that meeting, Mallory was there, so there was a discussion there. And I've asked, uh, Nicole to come up, 'cause we have an opportunity now, as the board, as all the boards have been notified, uh, to send a letter to Mass Housing about any concerns that we have on the, on this forty B. That's why I've asked that, uh, people take a, a look at that. And Nicole and Tim have had some concerns, and I've, I've had Nicole, uh, write up a rough draft letter, you should have it in front of you, a rough draft letter, of what we can possibly send, uh, to Mass Housing. We have to do it this month, because, uh, we, uh, the Board of Selecting got a letter, uh, a little while ago, saying that they had to respond to it in thirty days, and hold, have all the boards respond. I had suggested that they ask for ninety days, which I believe they asked for ninety days, they got an additional thirty days. So, that thirty days, I believe, will come up before our next meeting, so we're gonna try to come up with, uh, we could agree on the letter that is presented here, we can ask for some changes to it, and we can, uh, I can sign off on this, once we approve it, I can sign off the letter, we can send it within the next week or so. So, uh, has everybody read the letter?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think I need to go, uh, through the letter unless you want me to.
Well, like I said at the beginning, and this thing with Mallory mentioning that it addressed the growing concerns over mass housing of fifty-five and over, we've already dealt with that on two of our-
I'm gonna have Nicole or Tim or both respond to that, because there was a discussion about fifty-five and over.
That's what I question, I have to.
Yeah, Mister Busby, um, who was representing Mass Housing, um, that day, had mentioned that, um, you could look at age restricted, but they prefer, um, not to, but it is on the table in regards to, um, looking at age restricted, but they, they're trying to sway communities away from that, because of when they come in with a forty B, they prefer that you not look at that other avenue. In regards to that, because there's just too many legalities involved with that. So, as Mister Adams had stated earlier, we've already approached this, I know just from a resident in town, we've had a couple of these come up, and I've seen them in the past, um, with age restrictions. And, uh, the state is, is really preferring not to go that route, is what they're looking at.
Well, based on our past experience, the, the state did a study, and it, we brought this out at the other forty B, which was across the street, that was fifty-five and over. And that was brought, I brought it to the table, and that, the, the study that was done in Massachusetts, most of the people in Massachusetts that retire don't qualify, because they, they're too well educated, and they, they're too well employed. They don't come in under the money amount on this, and then there were, uh, other, the, the town of Hudson, who had a forty B in theirs, too, was the same thing, they came back. And both of these that were done in, across the street, and that was the ones up on, with Marander on Pine Street, were fifty-five and over.
Pine, Pines and Stonegate.
Stonegate.
Were both, uh, fifty-five and over.
Fifty-five and over, and that, they came back in three years, and we had to, after, we had already, and they had sold to fifty-five and older people, and it just didn't work out.
Not the Pines, but across the street.
You know, and then these people were, you know, had to deal with children, and not that that's the thing, but like you said, the state really doesn't like us to do it.
I think the overall point there was me, was that the developers are having a hard time, uh, selling these.
Right. They want to retire and go to the Dyton town.
Uh, uh, Nicole, could you add to that, because there was a conversation with Mallory and Bishop, that is it possible that some area or some part of this?
Yes.
Forty B could be?
There were two, two elements that she, they brought up in the discussion. So Mallory brought up the fifty-five and older, because there are some concerns coming to her about the older generations aging in town, and she wants to keep them available in town, if they wanna stay in town. Um, but also free up homes for, um, younger families and, and the such. So she brought it up, um, Bishop and the Mass Housing gentleman, um, did mention that they're kinda steering away from fifty-five restricted housing, which I believe was, um, the Pines and Stonegate previously. But what they're trying to do is fifty-five and older, what is it called?
One person could be fifty-five.
Age-directed?
Directed, age-directed, so what, what that, from my understanding, means is they will build houses that are, um, adaptable for fifty-five and older, but they don't restrict the sales specifically to fifty-five and older.
Yeah, right.
They did bring up the fact that, um, forty Bs or, or, um, any sort of development that is being directed toward fifty-five and older usually takes three times as long to sell. Um, just based on the, you know, checking of finances and, and building of the lotteries and such. Um, but they were, um, potentially interested in making maybe a zone in this, um, again, not restricted, but directed toward fifty-five and older.
A certain portion of the nine percent.
And that, that was just the dis- early discussion, so.
Um, this is, this would be the first time that I'm seeing a forty B from start to finish. Um, when, if, not, hypothetically, if we were to do a fifty-five and older, does that at all affect affordable rates? Like, can you do it, like, let's say we had a zone of, um, fifty-five and older, do X amount of houses within that zone have to be affordable rates?
We didn't do zone, we did the whole, the whole-
Well, we did the whole thing, but this is a little different, I, I hear what you're saying.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
I would think that if they, say, there's ninety-two houses here, so say twenty-five houses are gonna be, uh, so-called age restricted, or-
Right, how many of those would-
It would be six, or six point two-five, would actually be seven.
Okay, okay.
So I would think we would have to take that into consideration. I would add to this letter, then, uh, that they market it, uh, for fifty-five and over, if, if they're gonna have an area that's not restricted, but it's gonna be implied that age re- uh, older people can move into this area.
Age-directed.
Age-directed, that they market that, that they don't just do a general, uh, marketing of the houses, and then, uh, not push to have, uh, some, uh, older people.
I like the aspect of it, and I think it's a real, uh, nice idea, but the actual application of it, if you go that certain area, fifty-five and over, and then you get kids running back and forth from one side of the complex to the other side of the complex, I don't know, it's, uh, uh-
Well, I think they'll be made aware of it, they, they're gonna know that it's not age restricted, uh, it's not a forty B that's fifty-five and older. Uh, but there may be an area where there's gonna be older folks, so.
Same, it's having a portable home.
That's, that's how I'm thinking of it.
Condition, see, that works out, that's all.
Yeah.
Well, I think part of it could also, for your, from your perspective, if you want to talk about, if they're creating a zone of something, that the plan, you can talk about the layout in the plan. So you may want to discuss in this letter something around if a zone is gonna be created for a particular, um, group of homeowners, that they make that zone. They, they establish a layout that kind of, like, for instance, putting it on a cul-de-sac, or a little bit of a, you know, it, it offsets it. So that the layout reflects that that zone is there as well, to be able to provide that type of mini-community within the larger community. So those could be pieces that you could comment on.
So we, we want, we wanna see a physical de- uh, designation on the plan, that this area is for the age-directed houses?
Age-directed, yeah.
Are you wanting to color these in, is, 'cause all of these that you've got listed here are things that should be addressed, especially the width of the road, I mean, we're, it's just gonna be to what Dyton standards are.
Yeah.
So I, I would also, on that point, and all of these points, I would suggest that you be a little more specific in your comments. So that you, instead of just saying our concern is about the width of the road, you say that we would-
What does he, uh?
We, because we've, would, have recently had to make a change to have a roadway that was, um, kept private to address a smaller width.
All roads are gonna be compliant.
Become a public way to address the-
become a public way to address the homeowner's needs, we request that the roadway width be built to.
Compliant.
Town standards, and so you're very clear, you're looking to have that roadway wi- wi- width be built to town standards, and the rationale behind it is this. You know, the idea of the sewer systems or connection to town sewer, is there a preference that this board has and what's the reasoning behind it? Those would be, that would be the way I would suggest you structure this comment.
Absolutely, this is sewer, this, this will be sewerage, this development will be tied into sewerage.
Yeah, I don't, I, because this is my first information on it, I don't have enough information about it, but I would say the board may wanna take each of these in turn tonight and talk about what is the preference, what's the rationale, and then from there, the developer, that, that type of letter could be ready to be submitted.
This one, this one's gonna be connected to sewerage.
Okay, so why don't we go down, we've already discussed the width of the road, the second one is uh the sewerage. There is town sewerage that goes by the property, the Somerset Woods was gonna be sewerage, if I remember.
Did they get a letter that, that Tonton's gonna accept the amount or do we require something like that?
I'm not sure what happened on, that wasn't part of Somerset Woods, I don't think actually anybody other than Greg.
For the sewer, you mean, for the sewer line?
Yeah.
You get a will serve letter, right, from the sewer?
What's it called, please?
A will serve letter?
Will serve, yeah.
Yeah. For both the sewer and the water.
Yeah.
Well, and while the homeowners association is uh, you know, they have a, uh already have like a boilerplate that we use for that, don't we?
Yeah, and I think uh Bishop probably also has.
Yeah. Lighting, definitely lighting has always been an issue, there's, there's been like, if there's out, lighting on the outside of the houses, the market rate ain't affordable, I like the match.
Well, there was.
Are we talking about streetlights on that or just the, the house lighting?
Well, I think we're gonna talk about both because we have the situation with Dyton Woods where all the lighting for the street is on, looks like it's on private property, which means that they're responsible for, and I'm not sure that we want that to, to be any, any future forty Bs that we have to, homeowners to be responsible for versus the.
The town.
Uh the town or homeowners association, I guess, or maybe it's this here or the.
The way it is in most streets, it's taxed, yeah, if you have streetlights, you, you're taxed for it, but that's how you tax us.
Yeah.
So we, do we want it on private lots, we don't want it on?
No.
No, we probably want it on, well, my opinion anyway.
Yeah.
On town lots.
Or within the road layout?
Or town, what's that?
Within the road layout?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Retention pond system maintenance is locked and closed, we have, we require that in all of them.
Yeah. So retention of lots by the town, while a, allowing the construction to proceed, that's not necessarily, I know that's what Bishop asked, right there.
Yes.
Versus coming up with money, he wants us to retain lots, but I'm not sure that we should be requesting that.
There's two different types of agreements that we use.
So the, legally, the board only can ask that they choose one of the four different versions that exist in subdivision control law, and it's really their choice. So there could be, we've done tri-party agreements and some other developments, you've done bonding rarely, usually when you, Bishop's done the lot release.
Yeah, yeah. What's the other ones?
Those are the three I can think of off the top of my head.
Isn't that some type of covenant?
Yeah, there's a different type of covenant, I believe, in it.
So why don't we take that one off then?
I don't know what taken off, we'd need to, you know, well, it, it's up to the developer, it's which he chooses.
Well, we have to.
Is there any that we don't want?
Well, we have to agree to it, but uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As we get into the hearing, I mean, we're gonna, we'll have Margaret here, she can.
Yeah, I mean, by law, it's, it's hard to force a developer to choose one over the other, but what you can do is make sure that if they're choosing a particular one, you can put some restrictions on it. So for instance, to avoid these conversations down the road, you could be clear in a condition that um if they're going to do some type of a lot release, that after, at a certain point in time, that would be converted to a different form of guarantee, or there'd be a discussion with the board. I mean, you'd have all those conversations with the developer through your permitting of this.
So we really, the next one, we really can't ask for that either, retention of money upfront based on ten percent of the original construction budget value, because that may not be the process that they're gonna use. I can see us holding money for a year after the completion of the project, like we're doing on the Pines. I'm not sure if we can put a dollar figure on it yet, but uh like I said, they may come up and say, we're giving you eight lots, ten lots, twelve lots, so it's not money, it's not ten percent, it's not money upfront.
Right, but we're holding the lot.
We're holding the lots, but we can ask uh that we have monies after the project is completed, for up to one year in case there's some problems with the road or whatever.
At the end of.
Standard, standard retained, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause the lots, by holding the lots, isn't taking any dollar value, but it's still, it's, it's, we gotta hold them anyway. Cause it's time to get some lots.
What we do with clients at the end, he gave us cash instead of holding the lots, because he wanted to sell his last lot, and uh we're retaining it for a year.
My um suggestion would be that the, where it's original construction budget value, that you not focus on the original value, but whatever it is at the time of the final construction, so that there be some type of provision built in to account for inflation.
But is, is ten percent, is that kinda high, I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you wanna set an amount, you may just ask that they propose a condition,
I don't think.
or a commit, they commit to providing the town with a monetary retention.
Standard retained is just ten percent.
Is it?
Yeah, in my, in my business world. And then fifty percent of the way through, we usually reduce it down to five percent.
That doesn't sound unreasonable. What do you think about the lot size?
These thousands could be.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I'll tell them the time.
Just for my curiosity, what are the minimum requirements, slot requirements for a forty B?
There isn't really any.
There isn't really any?
We, we said, so, in other words, when we hear this forty B, he's coming with ninety-two house lots.
Right.
We may say those lots are too small, figure it out to eighty, which is gonna make the lots a little bit bigger, I mean, we may be accepting that. But we have some lots at a ten thousand, twelve thousand square feet in several forty Bs, so.
Yeah.
I don't know the specifics on this one here, um.
But can't we adopt a standard?
Can we increase this, I guess, by getting asked, can we increase the standard, like you were just saying, set the standard, but increase it going forward?
We could choose to make it a, as part of the board in Dyton, and they'll have to come in and ask us for a variance in that particular lot that, that. I like uh tw- uh twenty thousands, that's like a half acre.
Yeah.
And uh, but I mean, there'll be guys that'll come in with eleven thousand, fourteen thousand, I've seen them, I don't think we've ever gone smaller than eleven thousand, but I can't, don't hold me back.
Yeah, I don't, I think we've got some ten thousand lots.
The, the ones in Dyton Woods don't, I mean, I drove through there the other night and they, they look pretty, pretty small, in my opinion.
Well, some of them aren't completed lots, and they only did the area where they built them.
And Pines was smaller, but then when they went down from uh sixty-six to forty-five and then to thirty-three lots, kept on getting bigger and bigger, just like.
Yeah.
I looked.
I'm not sure if we can set, I mean, that, that would be a, a policy, but we can't, they have a right to come in and support the B, this is what we want, doesn't mean that we approve.
Right, it would be, it would be a variance.
We can make that condition though, we can, we can change.
Right.
So in Dyton Woods, your minimum exclusive use area was eighty-five seventy-four square feet.
Wow, let's see if it's smaller than ten thousand.
Tiny lot.
So that, I don't think all of those ha- those areas were that, but I think that was probably the smallest. It may have been next to some type of an open space lot. Um you had minimum setback distances, I mean, those are things that certainly you could ask that there be minimum distances between homes. You had a minimum side and rear yard setback, rear yard setback of fifteen feet, a minimum frontage of eighty feet, and a minimum front setback of forty feet to the center line of the way, I, do you still use that definition?
Well, we usually have fifty-five, it's a form A lot.
No, but is your definition of setback, front setback to the center line of the way still, or is it from the edge of the road?
It's from the se- center of the road.
Okay. By virtue of having the setback requirement and the frontage requirement, that does often govern the area.
Yeah, I, I know that the, the side setbacks, um the fire upon this question about, cause they may have to get a fire engine.
Right.
Between houses, so we don't wanna really make any lesson with the bylaws out there, no.
Not that, it's just a fire, yeah, they'll set each other on fire as well, in each proportion.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
It's a safety issue.
So I think it's appro- appropriate that we ask that the uh side setbacks be fifteen feet, minimum fifty feet according to the uh, the bylaws, certain bylaws of the town. I don't know if we can address at this time the uh, from the front of the, uh the road to the, where the houses, you said we went forty feet, was that Dyton Woods you said?
You went forty feet in Dyton Woods, I don't have any of the other ones in front of me.
I don't know if we wanna get that specific now, or?
Well, that was only on certain ones, wasn't it? No, it was.
That was the minimum, so some might have been more.
Okay.
So some could be, some could be more, but if you got an eighty-seven hundred square foot lot, that's not gonna be much more than that. So what do you wanna do with this uh proposed lot, meaning the minimum, uh lot size, allowance, setback requirements?
Well, I want the setbacks to be s- uh the same as what they are in the town, it's gonna be fifteen feet from the back, side lot, side yard setback.
Yeah.
Uh it's fifteen feet from the backyard as well with out, outside buildings, I don't know what it is for a dwelling.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with that on the setbacks.
It, it needs to be the same.
Yeah, the lot, m- a lot, meaning the minimum size, I guess, is kind of, it's kind of ongoing, it's kind of flu- it's kind of fluid at this time, so I don't know if we wanna put that in there or if we're not.
Right, but they, they can come back to us on an individual lot, you might wanna give them a variance on lot twenty-four or whatever.
Yeah.
I looked at most of these, these, his lots are huge, in the plan that I looked at.
You won't.
I didn't look at every single lot either, but I mean, it just.
They were all pretty uniform, in that, in that one.
You won't be granting individual variances in this forty B, it will be part of one, that's what the idea of a forty B is, as you know.
One general, that's not.
One comprehensive permit.
Right.
So you'll at, you'll establish within that your minimum.
It'll be provisions.
Up, upfront.
Right.
Yeah, gotcha.
But you'll have a plan that will show how it's all divided out, because that's the only way they're going to get that number of homes, is to divide it out the way they're showing you on their preliminary plans.
I have a question.
Well, let me just, while we're on this sub- subject here, he's got on the plot that he's given us, uh minimum lot frontage fifty feet, uh minimum lot area five thousand square feet. It says required, it says provided, he's showing his, he's showing that he's providing seven thousand four hundred and eighty uh feet, square feet, and fifty plus for the frontage. I don't know, I'd be concerned about that, obviously.
I don't either, cause I looked at, I thought his frontage, he had a different map than that guy that I was looking at, and it showed frontage marked on it.
Oh no, Benny, this is the.
Like Dyton Woods is what, seven, I'm looking at the Dyton one, Dyton Woods one now, and they're seventy-five hundred, and I think they're tiny.
That was further up in the application.
Do you wanna take a look or?
Yeah, when you did the modification on Dyton Woods. To allow for the extra homes.
Am I right?
You reduced it to a minimum frontage of fifty-six point oh eight feet and a minimum area of seventy-five hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't think.
Seventy-one percent.
Yeah, so look, yeah, so looking at, looking at what he's uh, no, that's forty-six lot, the vegetable subdivision. This is what he presented to the planning board, which is not what he's, you know, you know, I believe he, it says forty-six, I believe he agreed to forty-three houses.
I, I didn't see that.
A conservation, but it was ended up being ninety-two.
I didn't either, I didn't either.
It was ninety-two, so, yeah, so.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
It was just down there.
So it's five thousand?
That's what, that's what he's saying, the uh, the minimum is five thousand.
Just proposed.
That was a, a plan that he submitted to do a form A lots.
Yeah.
And they denied, they, well, I don't know what would happen. I have a question, does anybody know that when it was Somerset, was it Somerset Woods?
Somerset Woods.
Would that, would, that permit was approved, right? It didn't go before conservation and it was tied up and then ended, what, what happened to that?
Right. My understanding isn't, uh I'm not positive with this, but uh we, the zoning board, I wasn't on it.
No, neither was I.
None of us here, except Greg was on it, uh voted to approve it with a deviation from what our conservation says as far as setbacks from uh uh buffers for wetlands, I think we went fifty, we went a hundred. The town decided to, and the town decided to represent the conservation and take it to court and said that it should be a hundred. And it went to court and the town prevailed, it's my understanding, the town prevailed because the contractor did not pay his engineer uh to provide the court with the diagrams to show where all the wetlands were and everything else, so he, he hired somebody uh to do the conservation uh part of it. They didn't pay the cons, the, the person that he hired to provide the court with the information that the court requested, so the court denied the forty B because.
They didn't have the information.
Didn't have the information, so, hundred and eighty comments.
And that's what we meant with denial.
Yeah, right, so a hundred, yes, the only one that we have uh that's been challenged and actually defeated, so. That went by the, the side, uh Bishop came back with a uh subdiv- conservation subdivision that was denied by the planning board.
That was the forty-five units one.
Was it denied?
Forty-five, something like that, yeah.
Forty-five units, yeah, yeah.
It was denied?
It was denied by the planning board.
Did they have a reason for that?
Yeah, I, I don't know what the reason is, I, I didn't go to that, but they.
Well, can that be, can we address the, or ask the board for that information?
I believe that one of their concerns was that there was a road in this subdivision that was three thousand square, uh three thousand linear feet. In other words, we have uh dead ends, you know, cul-de-sacs, six hundred feet. I think in one of the forty Bs we gave, and it might have been uh Pines, we allowed them to go to nine hundred feet.
That was a forty.
This was three thousand feet that they wanted, and they wanted, but my understanding is they wanted to butt down, so they uh, it was denied and then they withdrew without prejudice, uh in case from the planning board.
Okay.
But that was one of their uh main concerns, so now that we, now we're gonna, in the future, we'll have um a forty B with ninety-two houses. So getting back to this list over here, so. So what do we wanna say regarding the proposed lot, meaning the minimum lot size allowance, do we wanna give a thing here? I'm not content with the fifty, five thousand square feet and fifty feet of frontage, so do we wanna go higher than that?
I'd like to go fifteen, fifteen hundreds, uh fifteen thousand square feet.
Can we put that, I mean, can we decide on that tonight and put it in the letter, or do we wanna take some time to?
Well, I.
Or just not put it in, and just do, just use the setback requirements, I mean, I mean, I.
Well, we're supposed to send them what our top issues are.
Okay.
No, I don't.
Yeah, I'm not sure, yeah, I, I agree with uh, with Jason, I think that we shouldn't get that specific as to the size of the lots, cause they're gonna come before us anyway, we're gonna.
We're gonna adjust it accordingly.
Adjust it to what we think is, is appropriate, so as far as the sideline setbacks, I think we can be specific about that.
That, I agree with you.
Yeah, we're not gonna.
Right.
So if we get that, Nicole, that we're gonna, uh, we wanna address the sideline setbacks, that they be what the bylaws are saying.
And that, the rationale, so set, setbacks from the side and the, the back and the front?
Not the backs or the front, no, uh, well, the back, the property in the back, but not the front.
Not the front, right.
Okay.
Do you wanna put a rationale in around the, to address?
Safety issues.
Fire safety.
Safety issues, yeah, fire safety issues.
Fire safety.
And standard town bylaws too, right?
Right.
Yeah.
I like the fifty-five from the center of the road too, if we're going with a full width road, cause they're gonna have people with parking on the street and uh when the snow removed, the town's gonna be responsible, not any places that put their vehicles, but uh.
My only concern about that is, is that we are gonna end up with smaller lots, and then we're gonna end up having, these people have more fronted, uh laying in front of the house versus having some five, in the backyard, which uh.
In the backyard. That makes sense.
But we can, you know, as, the case comes before us, we can decide whether or not we're happy with what they're proposing. Age-directed building plan proposals, shuttle service successful on road, building plan adaptability, casinos, clubhouse, et cetera.
Shuttle service for what?
Well, I'd like to have playgrounds, that's for sure.
Well, I think we can ask for age-directed uh uh building plan proposal, but I'm not sure we can get into the shuttle service.
And the clubhouse and all that stuff, yeah.
Yeah. So, we'd agree, we'll get rid of that, that part of that, right. Uh propose, uh proposal building schedule, inclusion of the affordable housing building schedule into the good market. Uh they have to give us that, they're gonna give us the phases, so I think we can cross that off. Adequate visual distance of entry and exits on the roadway.
Actually, I, it, it may be helpful to make sure that you say that you're looking to have the project built in phases, so that a phasing plan will be part of a proposal that's presented, so that they're not expecting to be able to build as they choose.
So we have a choice, then we can leave it the way it is, but if you feel, I mean, that we should include it, then I'm not.
Well, I think it gives, so the idea is to give some direction.
Yeah.
Well, they're gonna have to ask us for a relief from the ten, ten unit a year anyway, 'cause that, we have a ten, uh, uh farm aid lots of ten, ten units.
So you could say that be, based on, in light of the current um planning board phasing obligation that exists.
You're gonna ask what we would.
That we would be requesting that rather than deleting a phasing plan entirely, there'd be a proposed alternative phasing plan, something like that.
There should be a phasing plan.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
Do you have that, Nicole?
I think so, yeah.
Adequate visual distance of entry and exits on the roadway for safety and, and speed requirements.
Is that kind of a given?
It's kind of a given and they're gonna have to do a uh, a study, traffic study.
I do recall with this particular site, if this is the same site as, as um.
Somerset Woods.
Somerset Woods, that was a big piece of the conversation. So it may be worth, it is a given, but it may be worthwhile to note that um since this was a concern in previous forty B application on the site. That that be addressed from the beginning.
Yep. So we're gonna leave that in. Uh, school bus shuttle enclosure structure. Do we want that? Do we know if the school buses will, will not go in this area?
Well, if it's a public road that we're going to.
The private one, yeah.
Right.
I would think.
They don't go into the pines. They have, they have, they have a bus structure there.
Yeah.
They both have pines, it's Stony Ridge, but the pines is because we made them do it because we were saying it'll never be a public way.
Yeah. Yeah.
We were gonna keep the road.
Right.
So now it's a public way, I'm glad it's there.
Yeah.
Uh, but if it's a public way, then buses have to go in.
Right.
So I wonder if it's fair to ask if there'd be a enclosure.
I'm not sure about the enclosure, but I back here with the clubhouse and stuff, I do think we should require them to have recreation areas or common areas for, you know, uh. Uh, ninety-two houses.
I think that was.
We're gonna cut that down, but I mean, there should be some kinda area for kids to play basketball, or play a common area.
Playground areas.
Yeah, I think that uh Mr. Hashem had mentioned that um at the walkthrough, that um he was looking at some, some common areas for the residents to be able to uh.
Will you say Tim?
You know, to go out, out somewhere after dinner, that type of thing, you know, sitting in the back or, you know. So that was um discussed, but I just think it may have just been missed on the ball.
Right, so why don't we include that then, some common areas, either a park or.
Playground areas.
Sliden, picnic tables, that kinda.
Specifically. Okay, so specifically a park, playground area, tables, okay, okay, thank you.
I know it, like in uh Stony Ridge, we made them put benches. And we were specific as to number of benches, and we had, and we had lighting.
And we took away the. And we took away the major stricken across the street, there was playground areas added, in fact, they had that.
If you have it, it is there.
It is there.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, you're dealing, when you have children, there's, I mean, if you've got eight thousand, ten thousand square feet, there isn't a lot for them to ride their dirt bikes and all the rest of that stuff that comes with kids.
Um, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I know that um it was a requirement of um next door at the fifty-five and older and um.
Yeah, yeah.
When Mr. Federoff owned it, it was a requirement, he said money's aside in the, the recreation fund in order to build a playground, which has been built in there.
Right. Right. It has been, yeah, it's been built.
And that was done before he's.
Well, that was, he, he was fifty-five and then all of a sudden they come in with kids and there was no place, there was no provisions for this.
Yeah.
There needs to be a provision for common area for.
And we were, uh, if I remember correctly, and we were specific as to when he had it doing, he couldn't wait till the whole project was completed.
Right.
And then build the, put the uh, the equipment for the uh park, so we could be spec-. So getting back to the school bus shuttle enclosure uh structure, are we, do we wanna require that or not? I'm thinking, do they need buses go by? I mean, I'm thinking like the seniors, I think. They're gonna use public tran- transportation, uh, should we have a shelter if we're gonna have some uh fair amount of seniors in this area here? Maybe we should require.
I would say yes, first, my opinion is yes.
Some kind of a shelter. Yeah.
I just wanna get back to the discussion with the buses, as we noticed, you know, the buses stop, they don't stop necessarily um, you know, at, at one group at the time they stood. Basically, almost at every house now, so I don't know if they're um entering um, you know, the pines at all, maybe we could check into um that, maybe with the school department to see how they, you know.
Oh, okay.
In this town, if it's under a certain age, they stop at every house.
Yeah.
No one crosses the street here.
Right.
And uh, but I mean, as they get older, like you said, they do probably.
Yeah.
Load up in three or four different houses at one time.
But I know kids wait there now, but it's not a public way now, as well as Stony Ridge is not a public way until the town approves it, so both of them have uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
School bus shelters.
And I think that um if we're gonna require possibly a school bus shelter or some kind of type of enclosure, um we need to look at again, you know, the sideline issue on one thirty-eight. So, I think we'd be proud of that issue.
Definitely.
Yeah, we don't want it too close to the road even, so.
We're getting down into this parking on roadways for visitors, uh, is there a thing where we can require like for, like a three-bedroom house, there should be enough adequate driveway space. To park at least three or four vehicles, 'cause when you have three bedrooms, you're gonna have, you're gonna have too many cars in the road.
Yeah, what we've discussed in the past, uh, I'm not sure if he's proposing garages, but they've.
He is.
The, he is, so in the past, we've allowed them to use the two spots inside the garage.
Mm-hmm.
And who, who has space inside the garage.
Cars, why would you do that?
Uh, and then two, two other spots for visitors or whatever.
Yeah.
There should be a minimum. It can be longer, but there should be a minimum forced for parking spots, especially on a three-bedroom house.
Yeah. Yeah, and what, and what we did with the pines, because if the road is narrow, we said no parking on the street, but this might be different, I mean, we, we may wanna say no overnight parking.
That's right.
Uh, but if the road's gonna be the conventional sized road, we might allow.
And they'll have their own uh requirement for snow removal, it's a ban parking ban there, that's the rest of the town.
Yeah, yeah, there's a parking ban at towns, parking ban at.
Or if, if we wanna have them park on the roads, make the roads wider, I mean, we're gonna make them wider anyway to meet town standards, but make them a little bit wider than that.
Right, town standard.
Give them more, more egress access.
All parking on one side of the road, so I mean, it just, we can, how do you wanna deal with that then? Uh, I think we should not allow overnight parking.
That too, yeah, yeah, that's a point.
I agree.
I agree.
On-street overnight parking.
Yeah.
Cause once this is in, there's no one can predict what stupid people will do next.
Yeah.
I can't even predict what I'm gonna do next.
Yes.
That's 'cause you, most of us pretty much have settled in, we know what we're gonna do, our goddamn. Let's check on my sister first, and then I'm gonna disagree.
So, uh, as far as that goes, we've got no overnight parking, but do we wanna say anything else about parking on the road or address him uh parking driveways, then you wanna. Space for four vehicles in each lot?
And I, uh, well.
Minimum drive lot, driveway sizes, or I don't even, I don't know, I, I'm with, I'm with Bob on that one.
It's definitely, you know, when you have a three-bedroom house, you've got teenagers growing up and stuff, there's kids going, I mean.
Yeah.
And it becomes a real problem when you get an emergency vehicle and they can't get through, because this guy's parked on this side of the road, 'cause he doesn't have enough room to put him in. It's uh, wow.
Ken, I know like for, when we have the issue with put uh, that variance for Pleasant Street that we did, um, you know, the neighbors had a problem with how many cars they're parking in the driveway.
Yeah.
With a forty B, can we say how many cars you can have in your driveway?
I, I think, I think we can, I mean, we can't be uh, make it un-economical, but we can.
Okay.
It's, it's all, I mean, it's gonna be reasonable.
It's just a reminder.
I think for, you know, my house now, it was a, a two-family, so I had in-laws upstairs, we had a one point five cars in the yard. Throughout that apartment, we still had four cars in the yard, so I mean, it's, you know, like teenage, teenage kids at the time, and Chris and I.
Right, yeah.
Well, you should have a minimum of four, four places, uh, I think.
Minimum of four parking spots on, on the property.
Sa- it's a safety issue, that's, you know, but.
Well, back to parking on the roadway, does the board have the authority to implement a no parking on one side of the street?
Yeah.
We can do overnight.
We can, we can make that a, a condition.
But that usually falls upon the uh homeowners association as far as enforcement after that, you know, they have to call the police or whatever.
Well, right, if it's a public way, then they, they can call the police, uh, we, yeah, we don't, we're not gonna have somebody go through the, right, every half hour to make sure no parking on the street.
Right.
Uh, but we can, to get back to your question, Tim, uh, we can require one side of the road.
One side of the road.
I'm opposed to that.
So we got a minimum of four parking spots on each property. And they're probably gonna come back using the two spots in the garage for parking spots, and uh parking on one side of the road. And now that Tim has mentioned that, uh, we wanna make sure there's at least uh a sidewalk on this side of the road also.
Hmm.
I would be opposed to having on both sides.
Right.
I know that, I think on all forty Bs, it's only on one side.
One side, okay.
Yeah.
Well, in a subdivision, okay, they have a forty-foot right-of-way, on most roads, right, it's twenty-six feet of pavement, but to allow for twenty-six, they have less. But they could go as wide as twenty-six, and it's seven feet on each side for utilities and inside the house, so that equals forty feet.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's how they kinda base that on. We don't usually always go twenty-six wide as you, a lot of streets are just twenty with pavement, but they have, if they need to in the future.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Go wide, the town owns, will own that forty feet.
Right.
They wouldn't have to take advantage of domain or anything.
So, I mean, we can request sidewalks on both sides of the road and do that, we know how negotiations go.
He's got. He, he's gonna determine whether it's, it makes it a like a normal.
Yeah. Yeah.
So ninety houses, both sides of the street.
Yes, I was, both sides, um.
What is, do you have his layout?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
The binder, the binder, yeah.
Some of them are really small.
Chapter three, I think.
Yeah, it's chap- yeah.
Chapter three?
I think so.
Yeah.
I really. I'm not that, I'm sealed, you're sure.
Is that?
That, that, that one, 'cause I was thinking this.
Yeah. Well, I, I hear you.
You know, it don't look.
Yeah, I looked at it, I thought, I said, this isn't bad, and I saw forty-six lots.
Yeah, I don't even know why that's in there.
Yeah, is there anything else we would like to add to what's already been noted?
So I guess my only question or concern, I don't even know if we can even include something in this, or have it be pertinent to this, is, is with ninety houses, forty Bs. And the current situation of the schools with, I don't know if there's anything we can do to reduce the size.
Jason. We can try to reduce the size, but we can't use the fact that it affects our schools or our fire department.
Which I, I find that hard, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I find that very hard to believe that, even if we can't have to do a school study or something, or plan for this, because it's a disaster waiting to happen.
The state gives us money.
Jason, well, 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 let me just, yeah, yeah, let, let me clarify this. We, when the forty B becomes before us, we can't take into consideration, we have to hire more police, if it's a fifty-five and older, more ambulance, says blah, blah, blah.
Right.
At this stage though, I think we can make a point, because we're, we're giving our opinion out the mass.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Housing has to, how it's gonna impact the zoning board, the community, blah, blah, blah. I think we have a right and an obligation, I'm sure the school, hopefully, I shouldn't say sure, hopefully the school committee's gonna address that when they send their letter.
Right.
But there's nothing wrong with us, because.
At least planting the seed, yeah.
No, I think we're adding six trailers to uh one of our schools without this ninety-two houses, never mind what's going, down the road, I'm sure we're gonna be adding to the, the school, so I.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I agree with Ken.
I have no problems that we can address it at this stage of the game.
At this time.
Yeah.
But when it comes time for us to make our decision, we can't base it on that because of the fact that, like Ken said, uh, the school, the police and all this. They, they fund us with our cherry sheet, with our.
Right, understood.
We tried to get this voted out about four years ago, and it passed again, uh, it, I mean, I was really surprised that it was so far the other way.
Yeah.
It, it, you know, because it, it's affecting every town that has septic systems, I mean, they're getting, we're getting inundated with this.
I voted against, I, I voted to get rid of forty Bs, I didn't like, I don't like the uh, the state mandating stuff without backing up with money.
Right.
I'm all for affordable housing.
Yeah.
Believe me, I, I fight for it, I.
So do I, as do I, yeah.
But it impacts our schools, and if the state's gonna say we're gonna have ten percent, then when we, we get a percentage, give us the money for us, yeah, give us, we do that on forty Rs, but not forty B, uh, forty Bs.
To build school, yeah.
So that was my concern.
Yeah.
Dyton voted to get rid of it. Boston, Brockton, Springfield, all the big cities voted to keep it, because they're probably at the ten percent.
Right.
Uh, but the smaller communities, they, they can hit with this, and Dyton's one of those communities now that people don't mind going to Boston, they can jump on the twenty-four or four ninety-five or whatever, so it's easy for them to get to Boston now, so we're, we're getting impacted. This would be our eighth forty B come to town.
Yeah.
Uh, so I mean, it's, it's impacting, so I'm upset that the state doesn't give us some money, 'cause it does impact our schools.
Or they won't let us design or build based on the impact of schools, right.
Or address it, right, you know.
Discriminatory to the applicant is basically what it is.
It's, it's what it announced too, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I do have a question, I don't know if we've moved on, Mr. Chairman.
No, we're still coming up with ideas as to uh putting this, is that we, is that we talking about then? Something we should add to this letter? That we're gonna send?
I would like to add something about the school effect to, of this ninety-unit forty B.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the over, I think addressing the overall impact of town services, would that also would be a key issue.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, we can be specific about the schools, but also imply, you know, it's gonna be ambulances.
All town services.
All town services, yeah.
Impact everything, ev- every.
Not saying we can't do anything, we can do anything about it, but at least this is.
Ninety houses, you got two thirds, that's a hundred and eighty kids, plus their parents, you know, it's, we need peace, police protection, we need ambulance protection, uh, it's, it's, and it's.
This is the time to release.
Yeah.
Water, it affects everybody, everybody in town.
Yeah. So, so you, you had a question then, Tim?
Yeah, just uh going further down, um, it says that um during the selectors review period, um, do, do the board of selectors make comments or gas for forty Bs? And if so, would we be able to have the information before or sent to us so we can review it?
I.
So they do make comments, and it is part of the public record with the application, for the forty B application, but it's not necessarily sent to you before it's sent to you.
Right, and then, we don't have the application yet, so they're not gonna address that, but they can, they can, as any other board in town, they can send something to Mass Housing. Uh, with their concerns, so school department, steward, department, all the different departments as well, as well as what we're doing here, but we have to finalize our letter tonight now. We're not gonna have it written tonight, but we got the general idea, and I'm, if we vote on it and you give me permission to sign off on it, then I'm, whenever Nicole is finished with it, uh, we'll, we'll send it out.
She'll probably be finished tonight, the way she's typing.
Uh, well, you should have a copy for us, uh, to get assigned tonight. So is there anything else that uh we feel uh that we need to add to this, and once I sign it, we'll send a copy of everybody. We'll find out what that sixty-day date is, to, to drop that date, to send it to Mass Housing, if we got time to, to then send it to people and to have any corrections or anything, we can do that. If not, we, I'm just gonna sign it whenever.
Yeah, Valerie, um, at the meeting, she did say as soon as possible, because they're already collecting them.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I will check in with her as far as the actual bid line, and then we'll be at my.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's either gonna be, it won't be, probably be done tomorrow, beginning of next week, I'm sure we'll have this already out, sent down.
Put a postscript down on Dyton says Uncle.
Is there a motion that we make on this or not technically?
So we need to uh make a motion that.
I, I would ask Mr. Chairman that you go down the list and you say yea or nay for each of the items.
Yeah.
Um, I know there was some discussion on editing some of them, but um, just so I can make it easier for my notes and uh getting this out to you quickly.
Sure. So, I'm not gonna make the motion, but someone's gonna make a motion with all of these items, okay, so uh the width of the road norm would be adopted as a public way, we want town standards.
I'll make that motion.
It's all gonna, we'll have one motion, but we'll, let's go down it and then you can say, I make a motion to what the chairman is just, I don't mind.
Okay.
Okay, gotcha.
Uh, self-contained sewer system, uh. Will serve letter, I can't read my own writing here.
It's gonna be connected to town sewer.
The town, the town sewer and water, we just have to get.
You want a will serve letter?
We wanna will serve letter from the town, yeah.
Will, okay, that makes sense, but will serve letter, yes, okay, for water as well as sewage.
Yeah.
Correct.
Uh, homeowners association responsibilities and maintenance, I'm not sure if we finalized that, because they.
Can, can we get that both for sewage and water?
We didn't.
Yes, this is gonna be sewage and water, we, we need that will serve letter for both, sewage and water.
Yeah.
Okay. Right.
Home, homeowners association responsibilities, maintenance.
We didn't have, talking about that.
That was just a boilerplate, I think Bob had mentioned.
It's a boilerplate.
So we wanted to.
That we finalize in, in, in the process, correct?
So do we wanna leave it there, or do you want, okay, we'll, we'll leave it there.
Yes.
The lighting plans, we, uh, not to be on private lots, it needs to be in the, the road layout. We got uh, uh retention of pond and drainage systems, uh. Maintenance and lot enclosures, we're in agreement with that.
Mm-hmm.
We have some concerns about one of our forty Bs, the old lots, so.
That will, that will be the responsibility of the homeowners association, right?
Eventually, yes, but initially.
The developer.
The builder, during, during construction.
Uh. We got rid of retention of lots by the time while.
Mm-hmm.
Crossed all off, but anyway, we got rid of that one. Uh, we did have a question about retention of money up front, uh, we're gonna let, they have four options to handle it, we'll obviously be uh voting on it when we get the forty B. Uh, but we wanted to make sure that we had the standard re- uh retainer at the end of the project. And initially it was mentioned ten percent, but I think you said, uh, Jason, when it gets halfway towards five percent, so at the end, we, do we wanna be specific that we want a five percent? Uh.
Should we not bind to anything yet?
I'm not sure, but we want, we do want a standard retainer, so if we wanna just leave a blank that we wanna standard retain, yeah, yeah, as we get into uh the forty B itself.
That's, that's what I would say, go with the standard, yeah.
Are you keeping ten percent now, or not to go off on a tangent, but you're keeping ten percent? Are you keeping ten percent now, or not to go off on a tangent, but you're keeping ten percent now all the way through the project on, on a forty Bs?
Some are being, uh, I think it was ten percent of the original value, I don't know that we've ever increased it. Uh, a few of them, like the pines, I believe didn't actually have that language in it, and then Fisher agreed as part of a lot, a, a part of a change in the condition, so I think ten percent though was the number that was always calculated.
Yeah.
And, but you've never, you've never reduced it down to five, like halfway through or like that?
No, but these have taken so long that it's probably five percent of what the value would be now.
The banks, that makes sense, no, that makes sense, yeah, makes sense, yeah.
And what, what happened with the pines is we've held lots, he gave us a lot of lots at the beginning because he wasn't building anything on them.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And then as he got closer to wanting to sell those, we would give up some of the lots, we, in a sense, we were, we reduced the, the value.
Yeah.
And then for the pines, we kept this, when he gave us the check at the end, because he wanted to do the last lot, which meant that we didn't have a lot anymore.
Mm-hmm.
He gave us cash and we asked that we hold that for a year.
And I'm not sure if you're holding anything on Stonegate anymore, are you?
I don't know about Stonegate, uh, yeah, uh, talking about pines, I'm not sure what we have, if anything at all with Stonegate.
Yeah. We'll have to look back.
He came in offering his firstborn, but we wouldn't take it.
Uh, okay, the proposed lot, uh, meaning the minimum lot size law is a setback requirements, we specifically wanted to retain, uh, the zoning bylaws regarding side setbacks and the back, uh, back of the lot setbacks.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sure he's going to come back before us on the, the front. Uh, age directed building plan proposal, we want to see something along that line, I'm not sure exactly what it's going to be, uh, but we got rid of the shuttle service accessibility. Uh, we're going to keep the proposal of building schedule and, and inclu- uh, inclusion of affordable housing, building schedule intermittent. Now, basically we want phases, we want to know specifically what the phases are going to be in this project with specific timetables.
How many houses in each one?
How many houses in each one and the percentage of, uh, for every four market houses, uh, every three market houses, the fourth one has to be, uh.
According to. Be affordable.
Adequate, uh, visual distance of entry and exits on the roadway for safety and speed requirements.
We want traffic study.
Keeping that. Uh, right.
Traffic study.
Traffic study, yeah, okay.
We decided, I believe we decided to keep the school bus shuttle closure structure.
Yep.
In parking on the roadway for, uh, visitors, we agreed no overnight parking.
Overnight.
Minimum four parking spots on each, uh, property and parking on one side of the road.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, the new stand is mentioning recreational areas or passive recreational areas in the confines.
Yep. Yes.
And active, right, or are you talking about playgrounds?
Playgrounds, common areas.
Active.
Passive and active.
And passive recreation areas.
And just, uh.
And that'll be maintained by the homeowners association by the town. What do you say?
Uh, the school study we have to add in and, uh, over, and the effect on overall town services.
Yep.
And sidewalks as well.
Right, sidewalks on both sides of the road.
I missed the sidewalk, so, yeah.
School, uh.
So we're going to be requesting both sidewalks, but we'd be happy with one.
We're probably going to end up with one, but.
Ask for more and, yeah, ask for more and meet in the middle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's got, he's got to show us that it's not like a norm.
So we're going to talk about school concerns and, uh, as well as other, uh, departments in town.
Mm-hmm.
It's going to impact the highway, it's going to impact the, uh, uh, police and ambulance and fire. Is there anything else then?
Going to ask them to go away.
Yeah. So, uh, someone wanted to make a motion with all those, uh, conditions that we just referred to before this letter.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on this? Well, there's a famous say, I, I oppose, uh, will oppose. So I think my agree, I think we're done with you, we're going to go with, uh, a possible change in the application form.
And right now, it looks like you're going to need me next month for.
Yes, we got, we got some coming back, so, uh, we got Dyson was coming back, so we asked that you come back, uh, next week.
Is that at seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock and you're available as far as you know.
Let me just double check that I think I am, just.
Just for the sake of argument, how old's the youngest now?
She's seven.
Ninety-nine, that was the oldest.
Eleven.
Ninety-nine, oh gosh.
I have, um, I've done this for a year with you guys, yes, it does.
Goes by, doesn't it?
Time flies when you're having fun.
I can, I can, I can attend, I'm eighteen.
Okay, good, thank you.
So the next, uh, agenda item is that, uh, we've come up with a, a possible, a new application, uh, when somebody comes before the, uh.
I didn't want to do this one, but.
We haven't even started yet.
Chomping at the bit.
Yeah.
Got a little sexy.
Yeah. So everybody has that in front of them?
Yeah.
Good night, boys.
Good night, have a good one.
Good night.
Yeah. So, uh, it has a address, obviously the top has a, um, a phone number, a fax number, zoning board of appeals of the town Dyson, application fee is seven fifty. Uh, the undersigned, is this, was this your concern, the undersigned here by petition for a public hearing on the actions checked below. Uh, variances for sections, so now they're going to have to put down the specific sections that they want the variance on.
I knew that.
Was that, yeah, you knew that, yeah, well, you had this, well, you didn't have that.
I knew that.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Been around here a while.
Yes, yes.
If you would like, I could be a little more specific rather than just variance for sections, I could say specific elements within those sections so that, okay, so I'll add that text.
Okay.
You weren't here back in the olden days, but that was always there, would be twenty-three hundred, twenty-three ten, twenty-three five, whatever, whatever, oh, the, uh, those were only numbers, I'm just picking out.
Yeah.
No.
But it would be specific, that way we can review this, know what it is when we, okay, this is how it goes.
And, uh, the second one is a special permit from sections, se- similar situation, uh, the town on its own bylaws. An appeal of the building commissioners, uh, to grant or deny a permit, in nature of the request is to allow. Nature of the request is to allow.
Yeah, that would read something like a, okay, is the, the building inspector's decision to overturn, uh, someone's side yard setback, uh.
So is that specific to the third one or is it for all three of those?
That would be for all three, so my understanding, and this, this direct was originally Ross's, so I'm adapting from it, but my understanding is you choose variance, special permit or appeal, and then you say, um, you write over the sections.
Okay. Right, yeah.
Specific to.
And then you say specifically for, I want a variance setback or I want whatever.
Special permit.
I only have a hundred feet frontage.
Right.
Exactly.
I'm asking for variance. Yeah, so the property is located and it's going to give the address and then it's going to give the mapping, the lot number line, which is good. Uh, the petition, petition will attach here to the follow-up, so we're a- actually adding some stuff to what they have to provide us with. Reasons for the petition, legal description of the premises, including most recent deed of property. Site plans, the subject property must be drawn to scale, accurate and shall include, but not limited to the, to following information, all property lines with distances, all buildings located on the site with distances to their property line, any wetlands, all parking and impervious services, all proposed changes, lot area, furniture, and abutis. Two large and seven eleven by seventeen copies are required.
We're going to put, uh, kind of getting petty here, we're going to change large to full size.
We, we could do that.
Okay.
And I could say, um, two full size, seven eleven by seventeen plans.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question.
Yep.
The average person coming in requesting these type of things, they're two large, where would they get those from, would they, would they be able to obtain these lot layouts from the, uh, town tax assessors?
Um, I'm, usually the people who are coming in higher out in engineering.
You can also go to a printer and get, get the, um.
Staples.
Most, most of the people that come before us are just regular people. They don't even, there's, some people do hire lawyers and someone to represent them and stuff on a big type of thing.
Horton Street, Horton Street was an engineering company.
Right, well, that, that guy took the planning board.
Yeah, and we had, so we had a Pleasant Street though, that he drew out himself. And we would accept that, I would assume, doesn't have, does not have to be an engineer, but it has to be to scale.
Yes.
Oh, I see.
Right.
Right. Right, yes.
And it has to have the specific setbacks and all the requirements.
Right.
Um, so then do you want me to change it from, um, required to preferred? To allow for the average citizen to draw their own?
Preferred would be better, I would, because the average person comes up, he's doing a garage or an addition.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, it's different for like with this man here, this guy's had history with the town and, uh, or this last person, so he, you know, well, obviously it's a weird.
Could, can we go, you brought up that, was it Horton Street or, maybe it was Horton Street, but someone drew up their plan.
Yes, it was.
Pleasant Street.
Pleasant Street. Pleasant Street.
Yeah.
But it, it was, it was signed off on by a civil, by an engineer, right?
No.
No.
No, it was on a piece of notebook paper, kind of.
Never was.
Do we need, would we want them to be required to have it signed off or a wet stamp by an engineer?
We never have, we never have.
Never have?
Okay.
They.
Might be in their best interest, but if they don't want to.
No, something like.
I don't think dimensionally and, and.
We're, we're only dealing with two lots at the zoning board, we can't do more than two lots, okay, like we did, we did tonight, we took one lot and made it to two, we can't do three.
Right. Right.
Right, so, on a forty B project, we do require a stamp in, in the, everything else has to be approved.
Okay.
But, uh, on a, whether like that.
For example, somebody has a lot that they're dividing into two lots, like we had, we had tonight.
Right. Mm-hmm.
He's not done now, he now has to go to the planning board because he's got a subdivision now.
Gotcha.
He's already gone to conservation, but planning board has to sign off on that, they're going to require a site plan, so he's already, he's got an engineer, he, he had, he's done that already.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah.
The other guy on Pleasant Street wa- wasn't doing that, he wa- he wanted to build a, uh, he wanted two families, so he did it to scale and.
Addition. Yeah.
He doesn't necessarily have to have a, a, a plan.
Okay.
Uh, so, we don't necessarily want to put a burden on people who just want to add a garage or whatever, but if you're subdividing your property, then you, you have to be specific as to where the boundaries are and all that kind of good stuff.
Understood. Fair enough.
Uh, so.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to add text specific to that if, if subdividing, you do need a requirement of two full and seven eleven by seventeens?
Yep. Well, I, I'm not sure if we require, I know the planning board requires that, do we want to require, that's something we can add.
We never have in the past, but I mean, it was just time to pay to.
Most people, most people do it like, I'm thinking of Wellington, the Rougeos, they came in with a plan. We, we try to get down to nitty gritty when we're subdividing just the size of each lot and that kind of stuff, so. We might want to be specific when it comes to subdividing a property that we want a, uh, engineer to come up with a plan. How's, how's that, anybody else feel about that?
No, I agree.
Um, on, on that note, um, would you like me to add any text, um, referring people to the planning board if, for example, their frontage is, um, under restriction? Which I know in the past, they would provide us a plan that had zoning signatures, planning signatures would come to us, we rule on it. And then if we agree, it would go to planning, the same plans would be m- minimized.
Yes, in, in, in the past, as has been mentioned before, we did not have them go to planning board, we subdivided property, this is for years, for all the time that we've been here.
Yeah.
It came to our attention, we have a new, uh, board of health person came to our attention, he was looking at the plans that came in, he said, hey, we have to go to the planning board. So that, that person is going, the process is going before the planning board, any future ones need to go, so the, the planning board, so. Uh, subdivision, they're going to have to have approval, conservation, they have to have the conditions that we require. They need approval, conservation, before they can register with the registry deeds, they need our approval, our signatures, and they need, uh, the planning board, uh, signatures, approval that they agree for the subdivision. Uh, I don't know what happens if the planning board denies what we've agreed to, that's probably the courts are going to decide that. So, do we want to, uh, put it here somewhere? Maybe not at the beginning here, but any subdivision that's approved by the zoning board of appeals needs to go to the cons- needs to, uh, have approval from conservation in the planning board, that should be in here somewhere.
Planning board approval required.
Before it can, uh.
Subdivision, all subdivision, planning board approval.
Yeah.
That way they can review it, yeah. There's a stamp right on there if there's another one.
Yep. Okay, so a check for application fee made out to the town of Dyson, tax status report, which is what we, we required in the past, extension of time form, we have a copy of that enclosed here. In the event of an appeal of the vote, uh, building commissioner's decision, decision must be attached, so if the building commissioners denies something, it needs to be attached.
Mm-hmm.
Number eight, in the event that any other approvals have been issued on the property, such decision, decision shall be included as part of the application.
Any previous variances are in it?
This. Right, so, but this is probably going to be the burden of Nicole, I think, I guess they're going to, they're not going to necessarily, they may have purchased the property, there's been a decision made four years ago before they purchased the property, so they're going to be asking.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, we're in a, a process, we just got approval at the annual town meeting to digitize all of our records, it's going to be easier in the future. Uh, what the, what we're going to be doing is over in the building next door, planning, uh, border health, zoning, conservation, everybody's address is eighteen sixty Milk Street, it's going to be in one spot.
Right.
And I want to be able to go to, if I see a green fold, it's going to be the zoning board of appeals decisions that they've made, I, I don't know what the colors are, the yellow, but each one will have their own fold in border health. But we're going to be able to go to a specific area, we're going to share the space, we're going to put a specific area inside, uh, we can find all the decisions that have been made on that property versus right now, they're all over the place.
That's perfect.
So.
Oh, pressed.
And then some of it is going to be digitized, but some, some people, I know, some people, uh, some people are going to be able to go online and get some of this stuff.
Took a long time.
Not all information is going to be online, but some of it's going to be online, so people will be able to print some stuff. So, we, we can include that, but it's going to be a burden, it's going to be something we're going to have to deal with, Nicole. Uh, the petition is, the petition is interest is set as, out as follows, the owner of said land acquired legal title for property on. So as you know, we have sometimes, we have owners come in, sometimes we have people who are planning on buying the property come in that they get a variance or a special permit.
Looking huge.
Uh, second, uh, B state whether you're the owner of, or whether you have a lease, purchase and sale agreement, so we, we'll have that up front. Uh, if represented by council, please give the name, address, phone number, petition is going to sign, it's going to print the name, telephone, address, city, state, zip. If the petition is not the owner, ownership of fix, ascent here, so we want the owner to say he or she is okay with, uh, this variance, special permit, blah, 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 coming into this town. Uh, officers only received by and reviewed by, so probably the chair's going to review it, but, uh, Nicole will, well, Nicole's also going to review it, but, uh, it will be received by Nicole. The, uh, extension form is a similar one that we've had to the past, I don't believe there's ever been any changes to the extension form. Construction for the petition. Uh, please review all rules and regulations of the board of appeals prior to appeal and, uh, appearing before the, the board, so they don't know.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt you, the reason I highlighted that is I wanted to ask, uh, the board if, um, the rules and regulations, the, uh, Dyson zoning board.
Yep. Yep, yep. Yep.
Uh, bylaws, if they are accessible online and if so, I should reference a web link.
Yes, well, we don't know if they're accessible, right, we don't.
Okay.
They, as a role.
I, I personally don't know, but I, I would hope that they are.
Okay.
The way I understand.
I, I know that the town bylaws, not the zoning bylaws, town bylaws are online.
Right.
Okay.
The way I understand it, we get them because we're on the board, but most people pay for those.
Oh.
Yeah, but I, I wonder if you can go online and just print it up yourself and that's.
Well, then, okay, that would be a discussion.
For the B O S to decide, right, because it's a paid, it's a paid, um, book that you're paying for, as is, as is the street list.
Yeah, so can you check to see if it's online then, uh, for us, and we can, you, you can adjust this if it is online?
I would. Mm-hmm.
Uh, okay, number two, to be granted a variance, petition must establish that special circumstances exist that affect the parcel of land or building. In question that do, do not affect other properties in the same zoning district, the literal enforcement, that literal enforcement of the zoning ordinance would involve substantial hardship and that the variance may be granted without detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating, uh, for the intent of the ordinance, or, ordinance. Uh, and if you have any questions as, as I'm reading, just stop me. Number three, in case of the special permit, be prepared to present evidence that indicates that a public convenience and welfare will be served by granting permission requested that the permission request will not impair the status of the neighborhood and that the petition will be in harmony with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Number four, all petition, petitioners must be filed in duplicate to the zoning board of appeals office, number five, listing of bars around three hundred feet of the property lines will be created for you and you will be responsible to supply the zoning board with a check made out to the United States Postal Service in the amount determined by the number of abutis. You must, number seven, six, you must submit site plans as described in the application, so we're going to. Maybe s- modify this a little bit and spell out a little bit more as to what the site plans, what we mean by site plans.
Yeah.
Sure.
Seven, an advertisement. Seven, an advertisement notice will be created for you and sent to the Tonton Daily Gazette, Tonton Daily Gazette, if you publish fifteen in eight days prior to the hearing, you are responsible for handling the advertisement in the Tonton Daily Gazette, to contact Gatehouse Media at, uh, seven eight one four three three six seven zero zero. Submission of a copy of the paid invoice shall be received by the zoning board of appeals seven days prior to the hearing. Figure that the submitted invoice before the hearing will result in denial or continuance of your hearing, of your case, we've in the past, if we haven't had that, we've continued to hear it. Uh, number eight, see the attached helpful hints for completing your reasons for petition, number nine, the status, tax status form must be completed for each piece of property owned by the applicant and submitted with the application, blank words included in the application form, that's. That's included in the, that form, yeah. Ten, if your variance or special permit is granted, you must record the decision with the registry of deeds within one year in order for it to be valid, you must supply a copy to the zoning board once the decision is recorded. Don't you also have to, uh, provide a copy to the clerk, town clerk, I believe. Make checks ta- payable to the town of Dayton for the required filing fee of seven fifty, uh. Did we increase, uh, the price, uh, for a special, uh, for a solo array, is it fifteen hundred dollars?
I don't know that.
I don't remember now.
I don't know that.
I thought we, for solo arrays, which is a special permit, I thought we increased it to fifteen hundred, but I'm not positive at the time.
I, we. I, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you one way or the other, it was just recently too, wasn't it, we, we talked about it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so could you check into that, uh, Nicole, because we may have to add that, uh, figure in there.
All right, Zach, you go on what.
What's that?
Ask your father.
Okay. Actually, I have a question at one, more of.
You might know.
What?
Your dad might know.
He might, yeah, about the, uh.
Cause he, I think he worked on that just before he grew up.
He might have, on the, uh, helpful hints, um, I reviewed them and I kind of have two minds of this, I, I like it in the sense that I know we're here to help the applicant.
Yep.
But on the flip side, do we feel like giving too detailed hints is essentially arguing their case for them?
Okay, so why don't we go through them then, and we can, uh, decide whether some of these we feel may not be appropriate as a helpful thing, okay, so we're all set with the instructions for the petition, I think, right?
Yes, Mister Chairman, the reason I highlighted eight as well was because I was kinda on the fence as far as the helpful ones as well.
Yep.
I liked them, don't get me wrong, but.
No, not why, but I didn't know if they should be incorporated more into the instructions, or kinda just left to their, yeah.
Right.
Well, number one is, uh, identify unique circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape or topography of such land or structures, which are the basis for the variance request, example. Yeah, I'm not sure we should give examples.
That's what I was wondering, I mean, I like.
Yeah.
Uh, triangular shaped lots, lots which have suffered severe erosion, location of wetlands on lot. I would say we keep the first line, but not necessarily the second part, and I think it's important to have it first because some, um, some people, when we say what's, you know, what is the hardship? Uh, they start talking financial, which is not something we should really be considering, so we're being specific as to what the hardships, uh, could be, but I don't think we should give them examples. Everybody agree?
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
So I wanna get rid of that. Two, explain how such circumstances affect the, this land or structures, but do not generally affect the zoning district in which it's located. Uh, example, no other lots in the district would generally have similar circles they're created on this, the concept.
Yeah, but they always do that, we, we always ask that question.
Yeah, but I'm not sure we wanna give that example again, we, we have in the past, you know, like when somebody says that, I want a variance, uh, I don't have a hundred seventy-five feet frontage, I have a hundred thirty-five feet. There are three people in my general area that have similar frontage, a hundred thirty-five feet, uh, that's kinda what we're looking for, I'm not sure we should be.
Right, right.
They're gonna change neighborhood.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not sure if we should have that example, can we cross that off?
Go ahead.
Uh, three, explain how literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordi- ordinance shall involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the appellant.
Now here comes that question about financial or otherwise, cause it does state, and the thing with, uh, financial can be a hardship.
Yeah. It, yeah, not a hardship as far as the land goes, but it can, it can be a.
No. It's not part of the topography, that's for sure.
Right.
You wanna leave that out and let them make their own argument? I'm all right with that.
Leaving it out?
Yeah, cause when they come before us, let them tell us what their reasons are.
Right, and by giving them this, they'll always have one, everybody can say financial.
They do. Yeah, well, this is what the.
Yeah, right.
So strike three altogether?
Yeah.
Strike three altogether.
Yeah.
Number four, which will now be number three, explain how desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
How, actually, they need to explain that to us, does it stink?
Yeah. But I don't, don't think we ought to give them an example, examples, agreed?
Yeah, take all the, yeah, all the examples, just kinda.
Okay. Yeah.
Explain how desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantial derogating from the intent or purpose of this ordinance. Example, the variance will not adversely affect the surrounding properties by allowing a use which will be incompatible using the area or a loud infrastructure which is extremely close to the adjacent structure.
Give me another situation, just striking all those.
Well.
Explanations.
You know, I really think it's up to them to do their homework.
Yeah. Right.
And they should come to us with their, you know, as a reason for why they wanna do this, they should know what their reasons are, for us to give them examples of how to sway us, doesn't, uh.
To get there.
Yeah, that's what I was saying in, in the beginning.
It be, it, it could be construed as, uh, coaching the applicant, probably.
Yeah, exactly, right.
Mm-hmm.
So I think we should just get rid of five completely.
So that leaves us with three.
Yeah.
We're helpful, but I'm not.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was.
Let them have, let them do their own homework.
Yeah, well, we wanna kinda prepare them for when they come before the board.
Yeah, I, I.
That, that's what I mean when I said, I could help them, I don't wanna like do nothing, so I won't give them either.
But we don't wanna get them. Right, we don't wanna give them answers, right.
We're not giving examples, cause then it's kinda showing your hand, it's.
Yeah.
No, I wouldn't, I wasn't really sure what you were getting at before, Zach, but now reading through this and then going and talking, now I completely see where you're coming from.
You're right.
And most everybody, my experience, the whole time I've been, when they come before us, they know what their reasons are, what the, you know, you know, they've done their homework, research.
So we're not gonna vote on this tonight, we're gonna allow, uh, Nicole to make the changes, and at the next meeting, we're gonna, we're gonna vote, so it's a billion thing that I am.
Hmm.
Uh, and will be posted on the website once it's, once it's approved.
You can't file online, can you, for any of this, on our, on the town website?
Um, currently, there is a variance and a special permit application accessible online.
Okay.
So once this draft is refurbished, um, I could just replace those with this one.
But you can't actually fill it out and submit it online?
I don't believe so.
No.
You can print it out, but you can't.
Take a printout.
Right, gotcha.
We haven't moved back by far, but we do have streetlights most of the town, except my street.
So, uh, the next item is the minutes for May sixteen, twenty eighteen, is there a motion to approve the minutes of May sixteen, twenty eighteen?
Mister Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes from May sixteenth.
I will second that, Mr. Chairman.
There's a second, any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no opposed, public input, there's no public here, but I do want to, uh, remind everybody, every July, we reorganize the C B A. And so next month, we'll be voting on chairman, vice chairman and, uh, clerk, uh, for the board. Uh, eight.
Does it have to change, security?
Well, doesn't have to change, but we have to vote on it for, on an annual basis, and we've been doing it in July, so we're gonna just, uh, uh, vote on that.
Okay, okay. Yep.
Authorized expenditures, I've spent, uh, I've signed off on payroll two thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars, and on bills paid, two thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-two cents.
Do you have receipts?
I actually do.
Well, if you do have them, that's all you need to say, that you have receipts.
Sign off on.
And I have receipts.
Allocate it for the right.
I keep very good records of all our purchases.
Twenty-three forty-six.
Yes, and I believe they're all, they're, they're here, so we keep track of it, and we have a bill, make sure that we're not paying the bill twice and blah, blah, blah.
At forty-two cents.
Any of, anything else anybody wants to bring up before we conclude this meeting?
Nothing on my end.
Someone make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Go, I'll keep the adjourn.
Okay, well.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no opposed.
We're all done, thank you, thank you, Gil.
I said we get over at nine thirty, and it's early.
Yeah, I used the bathroom, my eyeballs floating.
Well, we have a lot to go.